For March 9, 2021 is called the order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website and under the Board and Meetings tabs. This meeting is being livestreamed on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28, and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for those replay times. Welcome to our meeting tonight. Wanted to take the luxury of making just a quick statement. Because this week marks the anniversary of the week schools were closed to in-person learning last year, when we were all working our hardest now to live into the details of the governor's executive order and the changes we know are coming to the Ready School Safe Learners Guidance. And this is a week when we are all affected by the acts of violence that occurred at BESC over this past weekend. We're coming together tonight to continue the vital work of service to our students. I want to take some time to thank our nutrition service workers who switched up their shifts this week, rearranged their lives to share trucks, and to make sure our children could be fed without disruption after the loss of vehicles to arson. I want to thank all of our staff, who over a year ago, with grace, creativity, and tenacity, dove into the incredible challenge of caring for and educating our students in the face of a deadly global pandemic. And I want to thank all of you, the students, the parents, the teachers, the janitorial staff, the secretaries, the mental health staff, the principals, our administrators, and everybody else, for the input you are giving as we navigate together what is next, and for your continued flexibility, patience, and I hope that all of you are able to take spring break as a time of rest and renewal. After this daunting year, I know many of you have had no vacation, no respite. It is important that all staff try to find ways to ready themselves for reopening by taking a break. These are trying times for all of us, and it is together, listening to one another, and having students as our focus, that we will once again rise to the challenge before us and serve our community well. One of the key pieces of our success in serving our community well is our social workers. I think I grammatically should say "are" our social workers. Social workers are a vital source of support and part of our educational team. They work together with educational administrators, teachers, counselors, psychologists, nurses, speech and language pathologists, and other staff. Their unique training enables them to understand and interpret the influences of the school, home, and community on our students. And this year, we have been able to increase the number of school social workers due to the additional investments available to schools from the student investment account. This week is School Social Work Week, and we would like to start this evening by reading a resolution to recognize this work. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair. And I'm going to turn it over to our Chief of Student Support Services. Our social workers work under the umbrella of this department. So Brenda Martinick, would you like to do the honors?
I'd be happy to. Good evening, Superintendent, Chair Lowry, School Board, Student Rep Schu, and our community. Tonight, we are so excited to have this resolution before you. This past year, the Student Success and Health Department was able to lead the development of a district-wide school worker cohort, increasing our social workers from last year of 11 FTE to this year of 42 FTE, with the support from our superintendent and the district's priorities through our SIA funds. Our social workers this year, within the first six months, have made almost 6,000 contacts with students and families. The Social Worker Lens is one of racial equity and social justice, and focuses on uplifting students' and families' voices to identify and support students and families holistically, while decreasing barriers to learning as a result of a systemic racism, poverty, and violence perpetuated against historically marginalized communities. I want to personally thank all of our school's social workers for all of the vital work that they do each and every day, serving our PPS students and families. So, thank you, and I'm very excited about this resolution.
Director Bailey, you are muted. Director Bailey is going to read our resolution for us as we celebrate our social workers, if he can find his mute button.
There we go.
Yay!
Computer issues. Okay. "School social workers important in public schools serve as vital members of the educational team, playing a central role in creating a positive environment at schools. School social workers have a lens focusing on racial equity and social justice, which includes uplifting student and family voice and identity, and decreasing barriers to learning created as a result of systemic racism, poverty, inadequate healthcare, and violence perpetrated against historically marginalized communities. School districts and local educational agencies should continue to work with school social workers to address students' social, emotional, physical, mental health, and environmental needs, so that, as the PPS vision identifies, students may be compassionate critical thinkers, collaborative problem solvers, and be prepared to lead a more socially just world. The Board of Education of Portland Public Schools extends greetings and best wishes to all observing March 8 through 12, 2021, a School Social Work Week." And I would just like to add that in these trying times, I am incredibly grateful for the work that our social workers do, and incredibly grateful that we've had such a large expansion of your numbers and your services, and your ability to help our students again in these trying times.
Thank you, Director Bailey. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6268, Resolution to Recognize March 8 through 12, 2021, as School Social Work Week?
So moved.
Second.
Director Brem Edwards moves, and Director DePass seconds the adoption of Resolution 6268. Is there any board discussion?
Just like so many of our employees, it's amazing how they have reinvented themselves and their roles this year and been able to still be there for our students. So, I love to picture those sidewalk conversations, and porch visits, and all those Zoom conversations. So Brenda, please express our gratitude to that team.
I certainly will. Thank you.
And we know if our experience is the same as other school districts who have opened up in person, we will see an influx of students coming in with huge needs that we haven't identified before because they haven't been on the grid, so to speak.
Yes, we will, and we are prepared for that.
Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment on Resolution 6268?
No.
All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 6268, Resolution to Recognize March 8 through 12, 2021, a School Social Work Week. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6268 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Schu voting?
Yes.
Funny, my script says "voting yes" for you, not just "voting?" So I'm glad you voted yes, because it was in the script. Now, I know that Nathaniel, you especially know the value of those folks that work in schools. All right, we begin with the Board Consent Agenda. Board members, if there are any items you would like to pull, we will set those aside for discussion and vote, not at the end of the meeting, but right after the consent agenda. After last week, we evaluated an agenda setting and made that change. Does anyone have anything they'd like... Oh, let's ask my first question. Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
Board members, are there any items you would like to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved.
Director Scott moves, and Director Constam seconds the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda?
Just note with appreciation that we're approving lots of contracts for our teachers and administrators this evening, and it's been an extremely challenging year, and just thank everybody for their service.
All right, Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
Board will now vote on Resolutions 6252 through 6264. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda passes by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Schu voting?
Yes.
Excellent. That one was blank on the script, just FYI, Nathaniel. All right, we turn now to one of the most important parts of our meetings, student and public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to review our guidelines for comments. As a board, we thank you for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments. We know that it's not always an easy thing to do, and we really appreciate you taking the time and energy to be here. Public input informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. And our responsibility as a board is to actively listen. Our board office may follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. We request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you would like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment@pps.net. Again, that's publiccomment@pps.net. And if you would like to sign up to give public comment at a future meeting, you can also use that email address, publiccomment@pps.net, to sign up. Please make sure when you begin your comments tonight that you clearly state your name and spell your last name. You'll have three minutes to speak, and you will hear a sound at the end of three minutes, which means it is time to conclude your comments. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment tonight?
Yes, we have student and public comment. Normally, our student would go first, but he is going to be a little bit late, so I told him I put him at the end. So we'll start with the public comment, if that's okay? And we have Thomas Hanron.
Welcome.
Am I on?
Yes, you are. We can hear and see you.
Good evening. My name is actually Thomas Hanran. Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Guerrero, and my fellow Portlanders. My pronouns are "he" and "him." My wife and I, Kelly, have two children in the Portland Public School system. One's a sophomore at Franklin, the other is a sixth grader at Sunnyside Environmental School. If you had met our sons before the shutdown, you would have described them as full of life. It's hard to... And it would be hard to see them sitting still. That's no longer the case. Both of our sons have suffered due to the isolation and frustration caused by remote learning, and this really keeps us up at night. It's made us realize that COVID risk is only one aspect of the health and safety of the students who attend Portland Public Schools, and we believe as a family that the governor recognized this when she announced her executive order earlier this week. I had asked to speak to the board back in January regarding the need to open classrooms. Since January, PPS has pulled the data on the significant drop in attendance for students, particularly in middle and high schools during remote learning, and also has surveyed K-5 families with an 80% response rate, and majority of families, including ours, want the children to return to school as quickly as possible. Oregon Health Authority has also consistently shown that there are low numbers of confirmed and presumptive cases for COVID in Multnomah County, and I believe as early as... Or as late as last week, and the total case numbers were simply 11. The ODE/ OHA metrics our children should be in class, by those metrics, our children should be in hybrid classes right now. We see this as a failure of our community to prioritize children in education. Those metrics are now actually dated when you consider that teachers have been vaccinated, and along with teachers, the elderly and healthcare workers have been vaccinated. So we're in a very different place from we were a year ago, or even six months ago. Studies out of states where there have been children returning to school, specifically Massachusetts, Ohio, and Wisconsin, show that the three-foot rule of social distancing is as safe as a six-foot rule, and we want PPS to follow the science and stop making decisions about when to return children based solely upon other factors and fear. Our school district has an obligation to see past the fear and follow the science for our children. The governor has ordered the ODA and OHA to revise the metrics to address our current risks. These new metrics should be followed and not the outdated study requested by the Portland Association of Teachers. We need to reopen the middle schools and high schools to the fullest extent as soon as possible. Metrics may allow for fully reopening within the next five days, and we wonder if PPS is ready to do that. We would ask that PPS provide a strong framework on the instruction to promote a true opportunity to learn in class and not allow the instruction of core classes to be shifted to CDL only. During current teacher conferences, we were reminded about how much our sophomore son has lost in each of his classes, and there's no path for him to recover any of the instructions he has lost. Whether it's debating with his classmates, or actually reading and discussing interesting subjects like Shakespearean plays, or actually painting in a studio, he's lost those experiences forever. Our children should not burden... Should not shoulder the burden of our community's fear, and we should follow the science. And as a school board, I am asking you to put an end to this now. COVID risk is only one aspect of the health and safety of the students who attend PPS. Our children do not have a union advocating for their health and safety needs, which require an immediate return to classroom, without delay for middle or high school students as well. We only have one chance to get this right. We've had a year to prepare for it, and we'd ask that you do it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Amy Silva. I believe I removed the correct Amy over.
Hi. I don't know how to make my camera go.
That's okay. Thanks. Oh, there you are, Amy.
My name's Amy Sylvia. It's S.I.L.V.I.A., and my pronouns are "she" and "her." Good evening, Superintendent Guerrero and School Board members. My name's Amy Sylvia, and I'm a lead in the Nutrition Services Department, currently working at Markham Elementary School. I've worked in nutrition services for over eight years. For the last six weeks, our union, SEIU 503 Local 140, has been negotiating with management around issues related to COVID-19. Nutrition Services is a predominantly female group, the lowest-paid group, and the only employed group at PPS that has had their hours and pay reduced when school resumed in the fall. Unawares to us, the WorkShare program became available January 1, 2021, and it would not have been difficult to re-enroll us. Instead, we're struggling to pay our bills. Only now, at our request, is action being taken to reactivate us. Management dropped the ball big time on this one. Nutrition Services employees have been the face of PPS during the pandemic. It's shameful that we're being treated this way. Throughout the course of the pandemic, both custodial and nutrition services employees have asked for the necessary PPE to do our jobs. Each time we've asked the district to supply us with face masks, we've been met with excuses. An MESD nurse invited to our bargaining table confirmed that having everyone wear the CDC-recommended mask is critical to protecting health and safety in our schools. We're asking you to provide those masks as directed by OSHA. We also need enough custodial staff to clean and disinfect buildings. PPS's current moderately dingy standard is not good enough to make sure the schools are ready for when the students return. Since mid-March 2020, members of SEIU 503 Local 140 have been in the schools, cleaning them, meeting with contractors and tradespeople, preparing meals, loading buses for meal delivery, and delivering meals either by bus or at a school site. We put ourselves and our loved ones at risk of COVID-19 exposure because we believe in what we do, to keep feeding students when they need it the most. In recognition of this risk, we proposed hazard pay for our members. What we received was an insult with blatant union-busting language. We're asking you to find a way to protect our health and pay us for the essential work we do feeding our community and getting our schools ready for students to return. Our union coalition is working together to ensure the district prioritizes the health and safety of students and their hard-working staff, so the return to in-person introduction will be successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Anna Bar.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for allowing some public testimony. My name is Dr. Anna Bar. I signed up to testify here a couple of months ago, when it was unclear about schools' opening, and I want to give you my support. I am a huge believer and advocate for public schools. When I moved to this country, I learned to speak English from public school. I attended public school all throughout and graduated from a public university, and then NYU School of Medicine in 2001. I went back to New York this year, in the fall, and spent some time with my medical school friends, who were caring for over 5,000 COVID patients across the hospital system in March and April. And guess who were the very first ones to send their kids back to in-person school as soon as it opened in September in New York? All of my doctor friends. And all of my doctor friends all over the country have their kids in school all year. My kids have attended public school here in Portland up until this week, when I had to transfer them to a private school that's going in person. They started on Monday. You may have received our letter that was written and signed by over 70 doctors, including leading infectious disease doctors at Providence and OHSU, in support of opening public schools. If this is not enough, you can look at the USA Today article written by a leading UCSF infectious disease doctor, Dr. Gandhi. It was published today in USA Today, who advocates for opening schools. I personally have been working since day one of this pandemic. I do mainly skin cancer surgery on people's faces. I'm inches away from their face for half an hour to an hour at a time, as they cough on me, breathe on me, sneeze on me. They're not wearing masks because I'm mainly operating on their nose and mouth. But I am wearing a mask, and my nurses are wearing a mask. And guess what? There has not been a single case of COVID in my unit. Masks work. None of the people in the school are going to be as close to unmasked people as I am for the last 2,500 surgeries that I've done this year. My sister in New York has a kindergartner who has been going to public school and wearing a mask the entire time. Kindergarteners, we find, wear masks better than adults, or so she says. So the number-one argument of kids cannot do this, or kids cannot do that, has been proven wrong time and time again in many other school districts. So that leads me to why I have been puzzled, why other places have been able to figure this out and innovate, and it really has not happened in Portland quite yet, although I know that everyone is working very hard on it. First, we talked about the HVAC and the school buildings, but I could see that nobody here has ever entered a school building in New York City. They were all built in the 1800s, they're overcrowded, and there's nothing special about them, except for that they've been open almost all year. Elementary has been open all year in New York, middle school has already gone back, and high school is going back. Everyone has the option, which I think is wonderful, if they want to go back or do remote, and that has cut down on the number of kids in the school. We should give our Portland kids the same option. The proposed two hours a day, a few days a week, does not work. This is how you should do it. Group A and Group B. Group A goes to school in person, Group B does remote. They flip-flop every day, and they stay all day long, a full day of school. They can eat lunch outside or spaced out in the classroom. After a month of this, everyone will feel comfortable going back to school, and we can work our way up to five days of school. We can utilize our outdoor spaces. We can utilize our outdoor spaces. We can be innovative, just like in the article in USA Today, the marching band in Texas was still able to perform spaced out, and they made homemade covers for their tubas so that there would be no aerosols. I refuse to believe that Oregon is not as innovative as Texas and New York. I refuse to believe that. The limiting factors of opening our schools today are the 100-person cohort, which is an entirely made-up number with no relevance at all, and the six-foot distancing is also based on the projectile distance of a sneeze for two unmasked adults. We are talking about kids who will all be wearing masks. Three feet has been shown in many school districts to be just as successful as six feet in preventing COVID spread. Opening schools and getting our kids back to school is an important duty, and we so, so appreciate you working on it as a school board. It is... I take my duty as a doctor very seriously, and I know that you all take your duty as school board members very seriously, too. And this is so important to hundreds of thousands of kids and families in Oregon. So thank you for your hard work, and please keep it up. You have my full support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your letter.
You.
And thank you for providing healthcare in Oregon.
Thank you for all you do.
Ms. Bradshaw, do we have further public comment?
Yes. We have Grace Groom.
Hello. Thank you for taking my comments. Sorry, let me undo my doc camera from teaching today. I think that will work now. Thank you, Superintendent Guerrero and School Board members, for hearing my testimony tonight. My name is Grace Groom. I'm the mother of two Portland Public School students and have the honor of serving as a second-grade teacher at Markham Elementary. Direct service staff are the front line of support for students and families, always have been, and even more so now during this crisis. Teachers and direct service staff support are addressing the learning gaps due to COVID closures, making sure families are connected to wraparound services, and supporting social, emotional well-being of our students every day. I support the efforts made by our equity-minded leadership and staff to maintain direct service staffing levels for the 21-22 school year. This is a good first step. But to truly center the needs of students and families most impacted by the pandemic, we need to do more than holding staffing levels steady. I'm testifying tonight to ask that, as the budget process for 2021 moves forward, you all hold in your minds and your hearts the reality of our school communities. Students are hurting, families are hurting, staff are hurting. We need help and support. Keeping direct staff, service staff, at the same level as this year for next school year will not support the necessary healing for us to move forward towards more equitable outcomes for our students. Schools serving the highest percentages of historically and currently underserved students qualify for additional funding for direct service staff through the district's equity formula. As I understand it, these funds are slightly decreased going into the next school year. And this is at a time when more schools are qualifying for those limited... That limited resource of funds. What this means is, although the need for more direct service support has increased, the resources to support them are going down. I also understand that the district has decided to invest direct service staff for TSI and CSI schools to be able to provide between 1.0 and 1.5 FTE for instructional specialists to work directly with students on targeted learning needs. Again, I applaud this effort. It's an important first step towards equity. Hiring more social workers is also a critical component of giving students and families what they need. So thank you. We need additional teachers, educational paraprofessionals, nutritional and custodial staff now, and in the next school year. The ship that is our Portland Public Schools is taking on water, and frankly, some days feels completely underwater, as it is overwhelmed by the rush of needs brought on by the pandemic. We need all hands on deck. We need more hands on deck, working directly with students and families in schools to right this ship. And you are the ones who can make the difference and determine who sinks and who is saved. So please realign your budget priorities for next school year to meet the needs that we are facing. If an item is included that does not directly support students and families, scrutinize it intensely. If we get extra money, question, why is that money not being spent on staff? Even if it is temporary, so is our need. Let's right the ship and get more direct support to our students now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Donald Oliver.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Donald Oliver. I have two kids in a PPS system. They are at Laurelhurst K-8, one third grader and one fifth grader. My comments are probably a little different from what you're generally hearing on these calls because it's, I think it has more to do with like where we are, kind of where we have to sort of exist in this space right now with our relationship with one another rather than, I think you've heard many, many speeches and comments with facts and figures on both sides of the case, but with that, I'll just jump right in. To be honest, I struggle with how to, with what to say in this sort of context. So I didn't write a really long speech because it's uncomfortable. It requires an amount of effort and vulnerability that, to be honest, in this time, right now, the pandemic, the schools, everything, I'm just really tired of having to dig into and tired of having to watch other people dig into just for the simple sort of decency of having an honest, open conversation where you can have someone listen to what you're saying. Tired of, you know, insults, you know, insults of teachers, of the PAT, the PPS, and insults of parents to other parents and like I've even, we've even had people like insult our kids. And it's, it's, it's just, it's enough, you know? To share a little anecdote, I don't want to waste all my time just complaining, but my wife organized a neighborhood rally a few weeks ago and it was well-attended for as jury-a-day as it was. But it was basically just to send a message to everyone, to everybody I mentioned above, parents, teachers, PAT, the board. And it was pretty simple. It was to, it was to ask for more transparency, you know, to just, you know, share a bit of the dialogue that had to have been happening at that time. And, you know, to share it with parents or anyone who was willing to listen about whatever planning that was going on, about an eventual reopening, in whatever capacity. There are several speakers and, you know, to be honest, it was good to get out among other parents and just be able to share and even talk like mask to mask. We didn't realize that out of that experience, we'd get, you know, our first like hit piece. Apparently, there was, there was an article from one of, there was a reporter from one of the local newspapers. And, you know, if you, if you read it, you know, you'd swear that we hate teachers. It's not the case. Like, we, we don't. We don't. It's just trash. And it was apparent from reading it, you know, it had all the familiar triggers of a hit piece. It was like the inaccurate quotes, you know, the reporter wasn't even there the whole time, you know, softball setups, you know, for someone, for a teacher to kind of respond to whatever interpretation. Suggestions of white privilege, and I don't think they caught like, like the organizers or everybody that was there. And then casual suggestions of what black communities would think about the event, which I take, you know, personally because I've been a part of that community and I still a part of that community. But needless to say, it was hard to read. But what I gathered from that were a couple of things that I definitely want to make sure ring true here and I want us to move forward with. It's just that simple notion of decency and kindness, transparency in what we're doing and sharing with the parents so that we can set expectations with our children, with our peers, so that we know what's going on and we're not blaming each other and fighting each other because we don't know the answers. And, you know, a little bit of trust so that, you know, we actually here in, we can actually work towards these goals together. And, and finally, like the courage to not believe everything that you read and give people the benefit of the doubt.
Thank you.
That was it. I'm sorry. I, I know I went over, I heard the beeps. It was important to, to get that out.
I gave you a little extra time because I think what you were saying was so vitally important. And I think, you know, what you're calling us to is, is to recognize that as, as hard as this year has been and as emotional we are about doing what's right for kids, how do we still be decent humans to one another? And in our, our stress and overwhelmness, continue to carry that forward. Director Bailey, it looked like you were going to make a comment.
Just thank you. You said it well, just to, especially in these times, to extend each other a little grace.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it. Really appreciate it.
Thanks for your testimony.
Thank you. And thank you for the courage to say, we can do this a different way together. Ms. Bradshaw, is there further public comment?
Yes, we have Stephen Lindner.
Hello.
Hi, Stephen.
There we go. Sorry.
There we go.
Hello. My name is Stefan Lindner, L-I-N-D-N-E-R. My pronouns are he and his. I actually tried a speech. I speak a little bit to what the previous speaker said. I'm a father of two PBS children. You see, we're bunked out there in the back. I'm economist at Oregon, Harvard Science University. The US Express, you're not my own and not supposed to purchase you. I would like us to work together. I'm dropping this course as quickly as we can. And with you, I mean both with PBS Board. Education is the support and association of teacher. When I have been working really hard and so, you know, my remarks are thinking about top of the end to come. We can open schools safely, we know it's. There's safety standards established. There's lots of evidence from other schools that this can be done. We've heard of those from New York. And it's wise to understand we have those measures in place or can have, can have them in place in Portland. Moreover, our teachers are vaccinated, which makes it safe for them and safe for students to open schools. We also need to open schools as quickly as possible to reduce the harm that we inflict on our children. Despite our best efforts, online comprehensive distance learning does not work well for most children. And tenants have been slipping. The chief of gap is crying. And perhaps most of them, based on our research, that shows that this cannot keeping away students from school cannot fit long-term harm and then, in effect, not only our high school students, but also our middle, middle school students and even our elementary students. We cannot wait five or 10 years for this evidence to match. We need to act now. That's really important. So this brings me to working together. You will PBS Board of Education and the Port and Association of Teacher have a joint responsibility for children for well-being and the future. So please, come together as partners to make this school reopening a success. Concretely, I think this means first focus on opening schools sooner rather than later. It's not going to be perfect. Right? You heard this from New York. Their conditions. It's not going to be perfect, but we can't tinker for another five years and try to make this work like in the best way possible. We have to start somewhere. PBS had 50,000 students. I forgot this correctly. I got this from Wikipedia. If we, we open schools for just two hours a day and half is students attending school, then that means that you provide 50,000 hours of in-person schooling to students for differently. If you delay opening, but just one day, the price students offer a combined 50,000 hours of in-person sessions. What is the cost of delaying? Is there real? We need to recognize them and we need to act accordingly. Second, I think this is what my previous parent also said is transparency and reaching out to parents and communities. We don't know what's happening. We don't know what's going. We have many couple of things. We have our work to do. We have our own schedules. We try and tweak them to make this work. Reach out to parents and communities, inform them about safety measures implemented in schools. So when we feel safety, bring this here, children back to school. Work with each aid to provide information. Who can be vaccinated of parents and other adult household members, who is eligible and how we can vaccinate. The more parents and other adult household members are vaccinated, the more children will return to school. This is a win-win situation and we should try to make this work. And the last thing I want to say is we need to be proactive and strive for in-person schooling as soon as possible. We're opening schools for limited hybrid schedule can only be the first step. The goal needs to be to expand to full in-person schooling as quickly as we can. Nicholas Christof recently wrote in about this for almost a year now, we as a country have failed millions of Americans, most vulnerable children. We must right this wrong. So let's work together and get this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have Jackson Weinberg.
Hi. I'm sorry. I'm coming from my car. I've had a pretty busy day, so kind of in-between stuff right now. So hi, I'm Jackson Weinberg, last name spelled W-E-I-N-B-E-R-G. Good evening, Student Representative Schu, Chair Lowry, Board Directors and Superintendent. I'd like to preface this public comment by stating that is not, it is not my intention to hurt anyone's feelings or to place blame on any individual board member. I'm also the deputy student rep for the district student council, so I'd like to clarify that I am not giving public comment on behalf of the DSC or the student representatives. I come before you tonight to speak about how Student Representative Schu was not included in the last board retreat of February 20th, 2021, and to clarify statements made at the preceding board meeting of February 23rd, 2021. I found it interesting how Chair Lowry named and read off policy 1.20.010-P a minute fifty-one of the board meeting that I previously mentioned. This was in the context of how policy requires board elections to happen twice a year. Just one page down on that same policy, there is a section called student representation. For those unfamiliar, the policy explicitly states that, and I quote, "The student representative shall be entitled to all rights, responsibilities, duties and privileges of a board member with the following summarized exceptions of not receiving legal documents, not having an official vote, and not being in attendance at executive sessions without consent of the board." With this in mind, it makes me wonder why Student Representative Schu was not allowed to attend the board retreat. Chair Lowry, when confronted on the issue, stated that it was a mere oversight since he hadn't been invited previously to other board retreats. This is misleading because Student Representative Schu asked to be invited and was subsequently denied. Also, just because the board had been out of compliance with policy previously, it is no excuse for them to continue to be so. This leads me to believe that it was a conscious choice to exclude Student Representative Schu from the retreat. Thank you for listening and thank you for giving me a chance to give public comment.
Thank you.
So I just, I feel like this needs to be addressed, that I had a comment, conversation with both Nathaniel and Student Representative Schu and Jackson following that board meeting. And I will own that I made the decision when I heard that Nathaniel had reached out to our board manager to ask to come to the retreat to say no, because it happened on Thursday night and I was not able to talk to my board colleagues and run everything through on Friday before the retreat on Saturday. So I made that decision. I will own it. And we have made the decision to allow Student Representative Schu to be at the next board retreat in April. So this is a conversation I've had with the DSC. I will own the decision I made and the conversations we had subsequent and that we will be ensuring that Student Representative Schu is part of that April conversation. I think we are working on further conversations about the role of student voice and the relationship between the DSC and the board. And, you know, the student representative is not a board member. They are a representative student voice and figuring out the best ways we can make sure that Nathaniel or whoever the student rep is in the future is consistently included in ways that are productive, but also protecting those places where board members do have certain legal and fiduciary responsibilities. So I apologize for my error, Nathaniel, in not having you be part of the February retreat or the retreats prior to that. And I'm thankful that you will be able to be part of our April retreat and that we will continue to work as board leadership with the DSC to make sure we have clear processes around including student voice. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any further comment tonight?
Well, that concludes public comment.
Right. We now get to hear a comment from our Portland Association of Teachers President. Our contract with PAT as one of our big labor partners allows them time on our agenda to provide brief comments to the board. And so I want to welcome PAT President Elizabeth Thiel tonight to share some, some brief comments with us. Welcome, Elizabeth.
Hello. Welcome. Thanks for having me. And I, I do have a few slides that I would like to share as part of my speech. Do I have the ability to do that?
Were you able to send those into Roseanne or to Kara ahead of time?
I did, but not ahead during the meeting. So I sent, I emailed. They have them now, but.
Roseanne and Kara, is that something we're able to do right now?
Elizabeth, if you, you are able to share them as well.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I will start without them. So first of all, thank you for giving me the time tonight to address the board. I wish I could be here under better circumstances, but I do want to acknowledge that this has been a very jarring week for educators. The governor's announcement on Friday gave educators and the district only 10 working days to come up with a plan to open our school buildings. The governor's announcement has made an already complicated situation monumentally more difficult to navigate, and it threatens to up, to upend months of work trying to develop in-person opportunities for our students that are centered around our core priorities of safety, stability and equity. And that's what I wanted to talk to you tonight, plans for the spring. And we know that we can't return safely or in a way that doesn't exacerbate longstanding inequities without a plan. And we know that no plan will succeed without the input of educators on the ground. The governor's announcement does not change the immense amount of work in preparation necessary for a safe and purposeful return to our school buildings. And it would be irresponsible to ask students to come into our schools before we have a chance to thoughtfully complete the plans and preparations to receive them. And so I hope you are pushing as hard as we are to get the governor to pull back from this ill-advised mandate. But tonight I want to talk to you about what educators believe are the critical elements for any plan to reopen our school buildings this spring. We know that this year has been so hard on everyone. And it has disproportionately impacted our families of color, multi-generational families, families who have lost jobs, families who have lost housing, as well as families who include essential workers. And that's why the district's plans for the spring must be centered on safety and equity, especially for our most impacted students. Given the upheaval of the past year, it's critical that we remember that many students and families have chosen to remain in comprehensive distance learning this spring. These are frequently our most vulnerable students, and we can't forget about them. We must prioritize stability for students who, for many good reasons, choose to continue to learning remotely this spring and not disrupt what's currently working. For students who do choose to return to school buildings for in-person hybrid instruction during this ongoing pandemic, we know that it is not going to be a return to normal. We can't offer what's normal. We need to have a program that's designed to meet the biggest unmet needs from this past year in comprehensive distance learning. And so we know, we've known, educators have known that simulcast is not the solution to meet those needs, and we are relieved that that's come off the table and looking forward to making plans that really are centered on what our students need. And so we've been engaged in conversations with educators to determine what is the right answer and how do we move forward positively together about, around the goals that we share and believe in. So over the last two weeks, we have asked PAT members in every school building to engage in conversations about spring instruction. These conversations have happened after the workday on a volunteer basis facilitated by PAT member leaders at each site. And on very short notice, we have had a huge turnout. I want to share those results with you now. So let me share my screen. Okay, let's see. Sorry, I've got a small computer. Hard to find all my buttons. Oops, wrong one. Wrong one. Sorry about that. Here we go. Can you guys see that?
Yes, we can, President Thiel.
Okay. So in very short order, we have had conversations in 79 of our school buildings. Eighty-three different conversations are reported. A total of 1,517 educators participated in these. And we asked facilitators to record commonalities from these conversations. We asked educators four questions. What is working in CDL for students that should not be disrupted? What are our students' greatest needs that are not being met in CDL? What would meet those needs? And what is your vision for how spring instruction could be designed to safely meet those needs? There we go. And what we found is that members had surprisingly consistent answers across grade levels. So this chart shows our answers for one of the questions, what are students' greatest needs? And our high school, middle school and elementary school educators, all. all very universally found that the greatest the greatest need of students was opportunities for social interaction. And as you know, that is exactly what parents found when we surveyed, when the district surveyed parents. And so overwhelmingly, at every grade level, teachers found that social interaction was the greatest need, and educators had so many ideas about how we could build a program that focused on meeting students' need for social interaction and social emotional wellness. Educators were excited to think about plans to offer social groups, clubs, affinity groups, art, movement, hands-on education and activities and extensions, music, dance, gardening. And as you can tell from the pictures that I selected, a lot of educators were really excited about opportunities this spring in April and May in Portland to offer opportunities online, I'm sorry, outside, not online, to students who are coming in to our classrooms. Let's see. We also asked students, or asked educators to tell us what is going well in comprehensive distance learning that we should be preserving for the kids who are going to remain. And first and foremost, educators reported that the routine, the consistency, and the structure of comprehensive distance learning was going well and was important to maintain for kids who continue. We don't want to disrupt those kids' routines. Of course, educators were very clear that the safety benefits of CDL are real and important, and we've been in comprehensive distance learning to protect the safety of our students and their families as well as educators. And we need to make sure that those opportunities that are working for kids, we also know even from the district's own attendance data, there are some kids who are attending better, like our LGBTQ students that have been attending in live instruction. Sorry, here we go. I'm sorry, multi-screening, and it's getting me a little bit confused. And we also found striking similarities in our K-5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12 educators in what a program for the spring should look like. There was near-universal agreement that robust CDL options need to be maintained moving forward, that we need to have in-person opportunities that focus on the social-emotional health of our students as well as their opportunities to interact with one another, and that there are so many opportunities this spring to do that with physical movement groups and so many, so many things that educators are excited to offer. I'm going to stop screen sharing. There we go. We know that there are many families who want to remain in comprehensive distance learning. I am one of them. Both of my kids, I have a seventh grader and a ninth grader. When I've asked them what they would like to do, they have told me that they would like to remain in comprehensive distance learning and go back in the fall, hopefully to something that is a lot more normal. We need to make sure that CDL continues as an option. The governor, her speech seemed to indicate that that's not necessarily her plan, and it is something the district has already promised families, and we are hearing, as I'm sure you are, from many families who are shocked that that would be something that is being threatened to take off the table at this point. Our strongest path forward together is to build a program around, I think, what we all believe in, which is meeting our students' needs. And there is so much that we can do, that we can be excited to do, that is based on what brings us joy, what our kids need, and what educators are excited to do with kids this spring, which is keep them safe and offer opportunities to give them what they've not been getting in comprehensive distance learning.
Thank you, President Thiel. I know you've been doing a ton of work, and that this has been an incredibly difficult time as you kind of figure out, like, we're all trying to figure out what this all means for our students and our teachers and our staff. And so really appreciate you taking the time to bring those teacher perspectives to us tonight.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to. And in closing, there is a little bit more that I want to say. And that is that we know that this pandemic has really brought forward some of the things that our community most values about our public schools, how important our schools are in the social-emotional well-being of our students. That's always been true. We've been talking for years about the needs of our students and how we could be better providing for them in our school buildings. And it's clear that for educators, our goal is not just to get back to normal. We know we can't get back to normal this spring. Our goal is not even just to get back to normal this fall. Oregon schools haven't been meeting our students' needs for decades. And our goal is to take the opportunity that was thrust upon us in this pandemic, this breach in normal, and take a breath and think about how we can better focus our schools in the long run to meet the needs of our students. The social-emotional needs of our students have always been paramount, and we haven't been doing a good enough job ever in meeting those needs. It would be a tragic missed opportunity if in this disruption caused by the pandemic we fail to utilize this pause to focus on what's most important, nurturing our district's children, honoring who they are and everything they bring, and supporting them in achieving what they believe in and strive for. We have an opportunity right now to really put our heads together about the school system that we want to have and to build it better. This crisis of COVID has demonstrated that there are resources out there when we need them, if we value those things, and figuring out how we band together to build a school system based on our values, not just now for the spring, not just in the fall as the pandemic hopefully wanes, but for the long run, is what I hope that all of this gives us the opportunity to do. So thank you for your commitment to our students' safety and their equity, and for remembering the need of our students remaining in comprehensive distance learning to also be centered as we make changes moving forward.
Thank you. And I know, I think it's not only our hope as well, but it's the thing, the vision we're working towards together. I know that's true, if I can speak on behalf of the superintendent and his staff, as well as on behalf of the board. So, thank you so much for taking the time to be with us tonight. And I know you have some more fun things to go do this evening, so enjoy those.
It is my thirteen-year-old's birthday today, so we're going to go have a birthday party.
I hear, I wasn't sure if it was allowed to be public that it was her birthday, but I hear that there's some Minecraft and some dancing in your future. So, enjoy very much that tonight.
Thank you, I will.
All right. Student Representative Schuh, are you ready to share your report with us tonight?
I am, thank you. So tonight, as it's been a while since I have last done so, I would like to provide an update as to a number of the recent activities of the DSC. First, I told you a while back that the DSC had approved its first-ever bylaws and that we intended these to be but a first draft of many. Led by the work of the Bylaws Subcommittee, the DSC has since approved a number of amendments. These efforts have accumulated in our bylaws, which presently come in at around seven pages, being fairly robust and comprehensive, which provides much-needed clarity and structure to our operations. We anticipate that we will continue to make amendments for the immediately foreseeable future. An additional endeavor that has really been ramping up lately is the planning of the Third Annual PPS Student Summit. This policy-mandated summit, which had to be canceled last year due to COVID, aims to, quote, "promote student voice, foster connections, and promote the work of the council," end quote. Our summit subcommittee has begun meeting recently, and we are currently planning to hold the event via Zoom in the, in mid-to-late May. Similar to our plan for last year, the summit will break out into a set of four breakout rooms at two different points for a total of eight rooms, each dedicated to a specific topic, from community organizing to the climate crisis and climate justice. Also, similar to last year, we are planning to have an emphasis on affinity groups with a planned effort to both invite them and, in several cases, have those organizations that are both willing and qualified lead breakout rooms. While many more details are forthcoming, I can tell you that any student, as well as SLT, ELT, and the board, are invited to attend. Our working date and time, subject to change, is 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on the 22nd of May. The DSC has also recently been working to ensure that elections for next year's DSC representatives take place at all schools, which will hopefully result in the 2021, 2022 DSC being representative of all or nearly all students. We are still in the early stages of this operation, but most signs thus far are optimistic, especially at our comprehensive high schools. Finally, on an unrelated note, I feel compelled to speak to the acts of vandalism and arson at our central office. All I have to say is this. Anyone who thinks that destroying trucks used to bring food to hungry schoolchildren is an acceptable means through which to affect political change, a legitimate way to express grievances, or a remotely admissible pastime needs to seriously reconsider their worldview. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I've made a note of that, May 22nd date. I appreciate you inviting us all. Superintendent Carrero, would you like to provide your report to us now?
Good evening, directors, and buenas tardes to everyone listening in this evening.
I think we're waiting for the presentation to come up, yes?
Yeah, it's having a problem pulling up.
Or are you just, I don't know if it's that or if Superintendent, it's just, you know, giving us a dramatic pause before his, to his presentation here?
The comments might make a little more sense if you have the image.
That would be good.
So, this has been a dramatic and challenging last few days for the district. And the coming weeks will require us to continue to draw on our strengths as individuals and as an organization. If you can back up the slides, Roseanne, please. Thank you, Chair, for your statement at the opening of tonight's meeting, and Student Rep Schuh just now for your remark. First, I want to assure the board and the community that we will remain undeterred by this malicious act of arson and property violence that occurred this last weekend. We have cleaned up the destruction, and fortunately, no one was hurt. So, I want to commend our staff, our security and custodial teams, and Portland Fire and Rescue for their commitment to the safety of our schools and students. What happened early Saturday morning won't stop us from doing our work and from accomplishing our mission. So, we're going to keep moving forward. And I want you to see this image here, because you see what the act was, but you also see who's there bright and early at sunrise on a Monday morning, just like every other workday, ready to go out and do the task and work of delivering meals to our students. Thank you for your dedication. So, needing to rise to the occasion has been a constant theme throughout this pandemic. In a very difficult year, we've never lost sight of what matters, including the importance of racial equity and elevating underrepresented voices in our system, while recognizing that there has been a cost and an impact to students and families and our community. Our students need to be seen and heard in person for the sake of their learning and for their social, emotional, and mental well-being. And importantly, many of our students require in-person specialized instruction and services. And we also know that all of our efforts at virtual learning were always intended to be temporary. And now we're being asked to reopen by our governor. The details of the governor's executive order, which has not been formally issued yet, are still forthcoming, and how we respond is still taking shape. Here's what we do know. The plan comes in two phases. K-5 elementary schools will return the week of, that's sometime during the week of, March 29th. Grade 6 through 12 will reopen in mid-April. The governor's new expectations essentially give us a little more than two weeks to finish finalizing our instructional models and all of the detailed operational plans necessary to safely welcome students back to school buildings. And really, if you consider spring break, we're really now down to eight business days to land all of this. So there's still much to do, but we will be ready. We know it is safe for us to reopen for in-person or a hybrid of virtual and in-person learning. From the beginning of this pandemic, we've insisted on basing our decisions on reopening based on objective health metrics for schools. The key metric is the fourteen-day cumulative case rate based on the number of positive tests per 100,000 residents in the community. Earlier today, in an Oregon Department of Education meeting, Director Colt Gill reminded everybody that Oregon, the state of Oregon, is currently forty-ninth out of fiftieth in lowest case rates. So, this is one of those lists you want to be at the bottom of. So these rates have shown steady improvement. In fact, the rates recently fell below the threshold for school hybrid and in-person reopening. The public's confidence is clearly rising as case rates drop. A healthy majority of our families, including our families of color, have indicated that they want some form of in-person learning this spring. So based on the science, based on the results, we can move forward, and we will do so carefully. I want to share how we've been preparing for this moment. We want everyone to feel confident that we've taken the necessary steps to welcome back students and staff to our buildings. First, many of our teachers and other student-facing staff have had the opportunity to be vaccinated and have begun that process. Vaccination is the surest possible way to avoid contracting or spreading COVID-19, and it is available to all student-facing employees. Second, we have begun to address ventilation and airflow issues in our buildings. Wherever possible, we've upgraded HVAC systems at schools. We've increased ventilation, opened windows, and invested in air purifiers with UV lights for all learning spaces. We won't be returning to classrooms set up in the way we've always been used to, but we will be returning to safe learning spaces that have been adapted to meet our current needs and requirements. Third, we have already reopened some of our buildings for limited in-person instruction. We have more than eighty-five schools already up and running with at least a portion of students attending during the day with limited class sizes. We have opened up school athletics programs, which are operating in a safe manner. And by the end of this week, all of our schools will be operating some forms of limited-in-person programming. We have learned a great deal from these initial efforts, and we have made some changes to classroom configurations and adjusted protocols. At the same time, we recognize that each school is different and will require unique approaches, but the goals are the same: ensure a safe learning environment and maintain a continuity of learning. That's what our students deserve, our teachers need and know how to do, and our community continues to support. So our reopening measures are still taking shape. We don't have all the specific details quite yet, but all student-facing staff have access to vaccines. We've procured and distributed additional safety equipment. We have articulated and implemented health and safety protocols, and we have the guidance from health authorities to inform our plans. And we're educators. We know how to support our students and their success, and that's the most important asset that we have. Fundamentally, a thriving school community is about the positive relationships between students, educators, and families. So I thank everyone in advance for your support, for your continued flexibility and willingness to adapt to continue meeting the challenge in front of us as we stay student-centered and celebrate a return to school for our children and young adults. This will be a new kind of first day of school with a kind of natural nervous excitement that comes with being with peers and in new classes, and it will be important for all of us. I also appreciate what the earlier speaker described, that we focus on making this the most positive and welcoming return to school as an experience for our students. So staff will be sharing more details and updates related to the school opening a little later in the agenda. But lastly, I also want to alert our audience and community that if you now go to our district's homepage online, you'll notice a new banner, "PPS Reopens." There you will begin to observe a growing level of transparent communications and details posted there for all things related to... for all things related to school's reopening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent, and thank you to all of the staff that has been working so hard as we move towards reentry. We move now to our committee and conference reports, and we begin with the audit. Director Brim Edwards, do you have anything to report? You are muted, and I don't.
Sorry. Takes a moment to get off mute. Yes, I do have a report that the audit committee had a meeting on February 24th. We had an update on our, the current audits that are underway and the audit planning. People should know the P-card or the purchasing card audit is underway, including the fieldwork. And as you all might recall, when we approved the audit plan this past year, we noted that one of the audits that we approved was the Health and Safety Plan Checks Audit, and that we indicated we, the auditors would undertake that audit when there was in-person instruction occurring in schools. And so since we have limited in-person instruction and hybrid models starting up, that audit will move into position and the fieldwork will be starting. In addition, at the meeting, we also had a discussion of key performance indicators for the Office of the Performance Auditors, and there was several proposed audits and the refinement of different measure, how we measure the audit, the audit officer's performance. That's a best practice. They also showcased a auditee survey that they will roll out in the coming year as they conduct audits to get feedback from the auditees. And then, lastly, there was a more in-depth presentation on the health these health and safety building plan checks. And essentially, the objective of the audit, since this is now highly relevant, is whether the school buildings where students are attending in-person in classes are in compliance with the building safety plan that's been put in place on the onset of the COVID pandemic. And all the schools do have building safety plans, and the visits will be starting, and I believe audit committee members and others have been invited to participate in one of those walkthroughs. It should be important to note that the audit will not determine the adequacy of the building safety plans. It will determine whether the, the school building is in compliance with the building safety plan. So really important check, and that this is designed not as a got-you audit, but as a way to ensure and to review whether not only are we in compliance, what our, what our schools need to be able to effectively implement those building safety plans, which is an important thing for our students and staff. So more on that, I'm sure, coming up, and if individuals are in more, are interested in these walkthroughs, please contact the Office of the Internal Performance Auditors.
Thank you, Director Brim Edwards. Director DeFosse texted me and let me know that she'll have a report next meeting from the School Improvement Bond Committee. So we turn now to Director Morris, our report from CBRC.
Um, sorry, had to unmute. Um, so the CBRC is meeting together with the school board for a work session this Thursday on March 11th to discuss the strategic plan and multi-year business plan and do a preview of the 2021-22 budget and, and talk about the budget schedule, how we're going to proceed with, you know, the timeline for decision-making and, and milestones, and I think a general preview of sort of the framework that's being used, the strategic framework that's being used to build the budget. And the, the next meeting after that is April 15.
Thank you. Director Konstant, I'm assuming we can skip the charter and alternative programs one, because we'll be doing that in just a few minutes? Cool. Okay, Director Scott, intergovernmental.
Yeah, the update is that we have decided to cancel Thursday's Intergovernmental Committee meeting. We want to make sure that all staff have time to focus on reopening. You will continue to get updates from Courtney, legislative updates from the state over the next couple of weeks, but let me know for the April meeting, also if there are agenda items that the board members would like to put on that April item, April meeting, and I will put them on the agenda.
Thank you. Director Moore, anything from Policy Committee?
Yes, the committee met yesterday. We talked about three policies and the real estate complaint and technology use policies. Two policies that the committee has considered are on tonight's agenda a bit later. And sort of following up with what Director Scott just said, given the press of other work, especially all of the work related to reopening, it's going to be really challenging and over the next few months, and it's going to really put a strain on the capacity of both staff and community to engage in, in other work. The committee is going to have to reassess what we can reasonably expect to accomplish over the remaining three and a half months of this school year. We started off the year with a very ambitious, probably even unrealistic work plan for the year, and it's becoming clear that we'll have to scale back and prioritize the work. Accordingly, yesterday's meeting, the committee decided to pause work on revisions to the complaint policy, pending some additional data analysis and staff engagements. And like the Intergovernmental Committee, we have decided to cancel the next scheduled Policy Committee meeting, which was scheduled for March 29th, which is, I believe, the day schools are supposed to reopen in, in order to allow staff to focus on all of the logistical and, and planning challenges that reopen.
Director Moore. Director Moore, I want to be really clear, based on what Superintendent Guerrero said, and that we're really communicating clearly with our teachers and students, is that, that students will not be back in the classroom on March 29th. That is when staff will be back, and that the day that students come back is sometime that week, but it's TBA. So just to be, I've heard a lot of panic, so I just want us to be very clear about that. So sorry for interrupting you. Please go ahead.
No, thank you for the correction. Sorry, I missed those. Anyway, our next Policy Committee meeting will be April 19th.
Thank you. I just have gotten a couple of those emails of, from folks about the 29th. All right, Rose Porter, do we have any updates from Rose Porter?
Yes, in the interim between the official STEERCO meetings, Courtney Westling, who's head of Government Affairs, she and I have had some meetings with both legislators and other elected officials on some other potential options on ways that we can assist in sort of coming up with some other potential approaches to the current plan, which seems to be just to continue full steam ahead. So more to report later, but we're actively meeting with and working on some options to bring forward for consideration.
So would you mind sending us a briefing on those meetings before your next steering committee meeting, which I think is, is it the 22nd or the 23rd? Because I've had a lot of community members reach out to me with different ideas that are percolating, and would be good for us to be informed of the kind of discussions that PPS is, is having. Would you mind doing that?
Sure, and I would encourage if people are contacting you to feed those into Director Bailey and Courtney Westling and myself, so we can also get things in the mix.
Are there any other committee reports that we need to have?
Chair, if I could just express an appreciation to directors. Thank you for your sensitivity in preserving staff capacity so we can stay focused on all details, school reopening-related. Postponing slightly less time-sensitive work is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, to just let the board know, we, senior leadership and Scott and I made the decision to cancel agenda setting for this week. So we will not be doing agenda setting tomorrow. So if you do have items that you want for the agenda, you can go ahead and email those in, and we'll, we'll hold them for the meeting on the 30th. But we wanted to give staff additional time this week. All right, I think, is there, are there any other, I think I already asked that question, sorry. We are going to go ahead and take a five-minute break and take some time before we come back and do our charter school renewals. So we'll see everybody back in five minutes at 7:20, 7:33. About the great work these schools are doing, and I really enjoyed my time last year as the chair of this committee and getting to be part of the work. So I'm really excited to hear from Chair Konstant and everybody else about these renewals. Chair Konstant, meaning chair of that committee. So Chair Konstant, would you like to introduce this next item of our renewals of our two charter schools, Opal and Portland Arthur Academy?
Sure, I'm happy to. Yes, this is our annual process, and this year we have two of our charters that came before us in a full renewal process. Sponsors of charter schools in the state of Oregon, like PPS, are responsible for evaluating charter school performance and determining whether or not to renew the contract of the charter school based on its compliance with the law and the contract and its performance in three domains: academic, financial, and organizational. We follow the National Association of Charter School Authorizers' recommendations that a formal review application be used as part of a fair and transparent process. This renewal application ensures that all charter schools entering the renewal process have an equal opportunity to present data and information relevant to their request for contract renewal. It also ensures that the renewal decision is based on the renewal criteria specified in ORS 338065 and OAR 5810260400. The Board's Charter and Alternative Program Committee met to review the staff's recommendation to renew both charter schools at our February 2nd meeting. Then we held a public hearing on February 11th where there was an opportunity for each school to share an overview of their school community and programs and offer time for public testimony, both in support or in opposition of the charter renewal. We did not hear any opposition for, for either of the schools seeking renewal. The committee unanimously voted to recommend renewals for both Opal School and Portland Arthur Academy. We, I hope all of you have had a chance to look at some of the data that we, that was brought forward to us as part of this renewal process. There is really nothing notable in terms of any areas of concern with either of these schools. So it was just a wonderful opportunity for us to check back in with the educators at these two schools that I can, I can proudly say are serving their, their students and families very well. So Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce staff to further dig into the details here?
Yes, thank you, Director Konstant. I would like to invite Senior Director of Multiple Pathways to Graduation, Karina Wolf, and Director of Charter Schools, Tara O'Neill, to provide an introduction to each school. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Guerrero, Chair Lowry, Vice Chair Bailey, and Directors. Opal Charter School submitted a written request for charter renewal on January 2nd, 2021 in accordance with the charter school renewal process outlined in ORS 338.065. As Director Konstant shared, the Board Charter Schools and Alternative Programs Committee met both on February 2nd and then again on February 11th in a public hearing. District sponsors of charter schools in Oregon are responsible for evaluating charter school performance and determining whether or not to renew the contract of the charter school based on its compliance with the law and the contract with its sponsor. As a member district of the National Authorization Association of Charter School Authorizers, PPS requires charter schools to use recommended renewal application to ensure a fair and transparent process. Evaluation for the renewal included a review of annual performance reports, financial audits, site visits, and any other information jointly agreed upon by the sponsor and the charter school. This information is collected in the school's annual performance framework and report. Within Multiple Pathways to Graduation, the PPS Charter Schools Office submitted the 2019-20 Performance Framework and Report for Opal School in Review of Its Academic Performance, Fiscal Management, Organizational Stability, Adherence with All Applicable State Laws, and Compliance with All Terms of the Charter Contract. The Charter Schools Office found no areas of statutory or compliance concern in its review. Opal Charter School is a K-5 charter school in southwest Portland, housed in the Portland Children's Museum Building, enrolling 88 to 90 students. The school's instructional program is guided by the work of early childhood educators in Reggio Emilia, Italy, neuroscience research, and construction, constructivist practices. The Opal School, through its association with the Museum Center for Learning, operates as a research lab and professional development hub for educators nationwide who take part in Opal's summer symposium and visitation days during the school year. Now I'm going to invite Tara, Director O'Neill, to share some more specific information.
Thank you, Karina, and good evening, Superintendent Guerrero and Directors. The Opal School opened in 2001 and is in its 20th year of operation. Opal School was the first charter school in the Portland Public Schools District to open. It has successfully applied for charter renewal in 2006 and 2011. The school is currently operating under a five-to-10-year flexible agreement, which has been extended annually to reach the statutory 10th-year limit. It will terminate on June 30th, 2021. The Board Charter Schools and Alternative Programs Committee has been provided with copies of the Opal School Renewal Application, the Oregon School Profile, and the 2019-20 Annual Performance Framework and Report, which includes analysis of the most recent three years of student achievement data. In addition, over the course of the last charter term, the school has exhibited financial sustainability and consistently meets both financial and organizational standards on its annual performance frameworks. This is Opal's third charter renewal. Per Oregon Revised Statute 338.065, this renewal, quote, "shall be for a minimum of five years, but may not exceed 10 years," end quote. Opal Charter School has requested a 10-year renewal of its charter. Additionally, as part of its renewal application, Opal Charter School has requested an increase in its enrollment cap from 92 students to 250 students to allow flexibility and financial sustainability in future facility searches, if needed, over the course of the upcoming charter term. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion and second to adopt Resolution 6267, Resolution approving renewal of the charter agreement with Opal Charter School?
Second?
All right, I think I heard Director Brim Edwards and Director Scott, and then Director Konstant. So we'll do Director Brim Edwards' moves, and Director Scott seconds the adoption of Resolution 6267, and Director Konstant can be jazz hands at the end of that.
That would be, that would be Mr. Bailey to you, Chair.
Oh, was it Mr. Bailey who seconded? I just heard the male, like, you know, voice, so I apologize. So we'll do that again. Director Brim Edwards moves, and Director Bailey seconds the adoption of Resolution 6267, and Director Konstant provides jazz hands at the end of that. Is there any board discussion?
Yeah, I'm just delighted to say that 20 years after the first approval of the charter application, it's great to see. application, it's great to see a school community that has, I think, really demonstrated what we hope for in our charter schools, to provide some alternatives for students that may, is different than may be offered in some of our other schools. We look for them to be hubs of innovation, to share best practices, and to receive best practices from our other schools. And I say, it seems like a long time ago that Opal School was first before us, but it's gratifying to be here 20 years later because when you make that first approval of a charter school, it's, just given the nature, it's not clear if it's going to be a sustainable model. So I'm really pleased to see that the sort of spirit and vision of the original founders is still strong, and it looks like another 10 years, and I can guarantee you, I'm not going to be here for the next renewal.
So you say. I just also want to say I'm really thrilled to be able to see this charter renewal through. My son Harrison actually was in the first class in 2001, coincided with mine having a second baby, and I was looking for someplace to put the older child, the three-year-old, and he ended up at Opal, and I love the, excuse me, I love the merging of science and art and expression. It also harkens back to my, my family background and like the monastery education and the focus on the kinder, we call it in my family, the kinder, the children. And yeah, I'm really happy to support it. I made this comment during our hearing. I would love to see the Opal School in particular serve more kids of color because I think that the pedagogy and the learning environment is really generative and wonderful to see. So I'm happy to support. My family benefited by the, it just worked out really well for our transportation plan for my son's, you know, pre-K years. And in fact, just yesterday, I pulled out a little booklet that he had made with a fantastic photograph of him over breakfast. So I'm really glad to see this go through.
Thanks. Just want to say thank you to Opal for your really thorough work in preparing this renewal application, and I want to just mention that this is, Opal is anticipating a new chapter potentially in moving from their current space, and so that is why we have a, this renewal includes a pretty significant authorization for expansion of their student body, even though, you know, that's, it's not certain that they would expand enough to meet that total capacity that they're asking for, but they want to have the flexibility when they're looking for new spaces. So I endorse that. That's the, in the resolution, that's before us, and we wish you guys well in that tricky pursuit. And also just want to commend you for much greater collaboration with other PPS schools in the last couple of years, and to commend our PPS leadership in using Opal as a resource and in that collaboration because we know we have educators coming from all over the world to learn from your practices and see what's going on, so I'm glad our own teachers are benefiting as well. And then one last item, which is pretty interesting, is, you know, the whole name of the game this past year has been adaptation in terms of adjusting to remote learning, and it was a particularly interesting journey for Opal School, who really used very little technology in their curriculum before. It's very much based on hands-on learning and project-based curriculum. So to be able to carry those same learning principles and styles forward in remote learning is pretty remarkable. So thank you. It's a pleasure to have a window into what you guys do with your kids and families every day.
Thank you. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 6267, Resolution approving renewal of the charter agreement with Opal Charter School. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6267 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
All right. We now turn again to our leadership team, our staff, to introduce Arthur Academy.
Thank you. We'll do it, we'll do the same tag team. So Portland Arthur Academy submitted a written request for charter renewal on January 2nd, 2021, in accordance with charter school renewal process outlined in ORS 338.065. As Director Konstam shared, the Board Charter Schools and Alternative Programs Committee met on February 2nd to review Arthur's charter school renewal application and supplementary information, and then again on February 11th in a public hearing. The next step in the renewal process is to determine whether or not to approve the school's request for renewal. The PPS Charter Schools Office submitted the 2019-20 Performance Framework and Report for Portland Arthur Academy in review of its academic performance, fiscal management, organizational stability, adherence with all applicable state laws, and compliance with all terms of the charter contract. The Charter Schools Office found no areas of statutory or compliance concern in its review. Portland Arthur Academy Charter School is a K5 charter school in southeast Portland, housed on the Ascension Catholic Church campus, enrolling 175 students. The school uses a research-based direct instruction model that focuses students through a highly organized incremental curriculum and ensures they master each skill before moving on to the next. Portland Arthur Academy is one of six Arthur Academies in the greater Portland area, which share a common curriculum, a single board of directors, and a central administrative office.
Sorry, it took a moment to unmute. Portland Arthur Academy opened in 2005 and is in its 16th year of operation. It successfully applied for charter renewal in 2008 and 2011. The school is currently operating under the five-to-10-year flexible agreement, which has been extended annually to reach the statutory 10th-year limit and will terminate on June 30th, 2021. The Board Charter Schools and Alternative Programs Committee has been provided with copies of Portland Arthur Academy's renewal application, the Oregon School Profile, and the 2019-20 Annual Performance Framework and Report, which includes analysis of the most recent three years of student achievement data. In addition, over the course of the last charter term, the school has exhibited financial sustainability and consistently meets both financial and organizational standards in its annual performance frameworks. This is Portland Arthur Academy's third charter renewal. Per Oregon Revised Statute 338.065, this renewal shall be for a minimum of five years, but may not exceed 10 years. Portland Arthur Academy has requested a 10-year renewal of its charter. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. All right, do I have a motion and second to adopt Resolution 6265, Resolution approving renewal of the charter agreement with Arthur Academy Charter School?
All moved.
Okay.
Great. Director Konstam moves and Director DePass seconds the adoption of Resolution 6265. Is there any board discussion?
So I said this at the hearing as well, but you'd be hard-pressed to find two different approaches to teaching and learning, as you would in the two schools that we're dealing with tonight, and yet both are successful. The original idea behind charter schools was to try something new, and if it's proven successful, to have that, those ideas adopted into the broader public school system. Right now, we have some foundational work still to do before I think we'll be able to do that. But it's my hope that in the future that PPS looks more carefully at the charters and starts stealing some good ideas.
All right, is Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
Ms. Brim, Director Brim Edwards, were you going to speak to this?
I was just going to say, this is another charter that was approved during my tenure on the Board from 2001 to 2005, and I say, we've had some charters come and go, and while it's a completely different model, as noted by Director Bailey, one that is addressing needs of students and families in PPS as well, and has stood this test of time.
All right. Any further comment from the board? The board will now vote on Resolution 6265, Resolution approving renewal of the charter agreement with Arthur Academy Charter School. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6265 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
All right, thank you all for that. Great work.
And to the team at Arthur, I missed my opportunity to just chime in and say, we really appreciate your adaptability too, and your kids continue to thrive in remote learning, and you've got a recipe and it's working, and we appreciate everything you do.
And I just want to thank all the committee members. Having served on that committee twice before, you're doing it, you do a deep dive for the rest of the Board, and it's a really important task because it's not like a just short six-month or extension that we're doing. So thanks to all the committee members.
And even though everything was very rosy with these two schools tonight, that is not pro forma. I mean, we have a lot of categories to examine, and I don't want to take for granted that both of these organizations are really in excellent shape, both in terms of financial stewardship and academic achievement.
Thank you, and thank you to our staff, to Karina and Tara, who just continue to do an excellent job of providing us with data and resources and helping manage this process so incredibly well, and the, I know the continued relationship and support that you provide to not only our charter schools, but also to all of our CDOs. So thank you to our staff as well. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce our next agenda item on COVID hybrid and LIPPI?
Thank you Chair Lowry. Yes, tonight, we will provide another regular update to share with directors and the community regarding current reopening planning. We do have a cast of senior staff, but I believe Dr. Russ Brown, our Chief Assistant Performance, is going to kick us off, and the other cabinet-level members will introduce themselves as they share their section with you. Thank you, Russ.
Good evening Superintendent Guerrero, Board Chair Lowry, and other Directors of the Board and the community. Pleased to be joining you this evening to give an update. I'll be joined primarily with Dan Young, our Chief of Operations, and Danny Wadisma, our racial equity and social justice advisor for this system, Senior Executive. And I'm waiting for our PowerPoint to pop up. I've been filling time. So, next slide, please. So tonight, I'm going to start and I'll go over our latest numbers in terms of COVID rates, and also an update on our K5 student-family preference form. We've talked about that previously, and just want to give an update. Our Chief Operating Officer, Dan Young, will come in and speak about health and safety measures, and that'll be followed up again by Danny Wadisma at the end. Next slide, please. So yeah, and we have guiding principles that we've talked about every time. I think they overlap significantly with those that were brought up by the PAT President earlier today. We have centered racial equity and social justice in our work. We have a combined interest, I think, in trying to make sure that as we plan and work forward, that we are centering our Black and Indigenous students in those conversations. Health and wellness of our students, staff, and larger community, again, is paramount and is a sizable chunk of the planning and all the work that Dan's team has done throughout the year as well as others. Again, we focus on connection and relationship. It's important for us, and it's an important part of instruction. I think sometimes we act as if social, emotional learning and academics are somehow separate, when in fact, I think that they're the same thing. And finally, we've talked about strengthening and innovation in terms of instructional core, and clearly, we have been required to innovate quite a lot this year. Next slide, please. Following up on what the superintendent had said earlier, we have good news. Our case rates continue to go down. We're currently sitting at 62.7 cases per 100,000 people over the past two weeks. It's a really substantial drop. We were at 550 cases over a two-week period in the last two weeks of November, and today, looking at the rolling average that we see for today, a seven-day rolling average, would put us at or near the threshold of 50 cases per 100,000 over two weeks at our next update, if those patterns continue. I have heard brought up a couple times, and I just want to bring up a little bit of clarification. If we get down below that threshold, if we're in that green zone that's below 50, I think folks are sometimes under the impression that the RSSL guidance somehow becomes irrelevant. And unfortunately, that's not the case. The Ready School Safe Learners document and the guidance within it that is mandatory for us for provision of health and safety is in effect until June 30th. And even if case rates in the county dip below that 50 per 100,000 over two weeks, we are still obligated to follow all the guidance, mandatory guidance within RSSL.
Dr. Brown, can I just cut in for just a second?
Sure.
Because I'm curious about that, then. Is there, given that, is there really a distinction between the onsite and the onsite and hybrid? Because again, with those RSSL guidelines, one of the reasons why we sort of have to do the hybrid is because of those limitations on cohort sizes, you know, class sizes, space, distance, all the rest of that. Given that, what's the difference between the green and the yellow?
Functionally, for us, I don't think there is any. If one were out in a rural setting with a really large, modern school with under-enrolled, one could have everyone back under that model. You know, the guidance has to be written for the diversity of systems across the state, and obviously, some systems are a little bit different place than we are in terms of their facilities and enrollment. That's why I wanted to bring it up today because I think there's this impression that if we go below 50, we can throw our doors wide open and things go back to the way they used to be, and that's just simply not the case. We're obligated to follow the RSSL guidance. And if you look carefully at it, you'll see that, you know, they talk about the need for hybrid if it's necessary to maintain small cohorts and to keep below the, having 100 interactions within a week for a student. So. Next slide, please. And I just want to give another update on the parent interests, talk about the results and how they've changed over time. I think we had some speculation the last time we got together, how those results might change, whether or not we had heard from early adopters and whether or not the pattern would change over time. It was something I was really curious about, and I think it was very interesting as the data came in. So if we could, the next slide, please. We were targeting an 80% response rate, and we achieved roughly 84% response rate, and this data is as of today at noon. Despite a 24, almost 25 percentage point increase in responses, the proportion of parents who want in-person option for their students has remained stable. If you recall, it was at 70%, it's sitting at 68.9%. So it's dropped by less than two percentage points, despite, again, an increase of nearly 25% of respondents. And you'll see that if we look at this, you know, again, roughly 2 out of 3, 64% of our parents want hybrid, another 5% would like to have LIPPI if that were an option. And if you look below, you'll see that the Black, Latino, and Native families continue to express comparable levels of interest in hybrid instruction. There was much less variability in this than maybe I would have thought at the beginning. And so to dig up under this, if you recall last time, next slide, please. I didn't have the disaggregated data on participation rate by race in front of me. I mentioned that. I did mention that I thought there was an over-representation of white voices in the data, and in fact, there was at that point in time. But you can see that, you know, again, we went from a 59.3 percentage point know, again, we went from a 59.3 percentage point participation rate to near 84%. And in that, we saw substantial increases in the participation rate for our Black students, an increase of 41%. We heard from nearly 75% of our Latino families, which was an increase of 32%. And we heard the preferences for 58% of our Native American families, which was an increase of nearly 27%. So we had really, I think, substantial increases. And again, the planned activity of having telephone outreach really increased the representation of Black, Latino, and Native voices in this data, and did a lot to decrease the disparity in terms of representation as we move forward. Next slide, please.
Dr. Brown?
Yes. Can we back up for a second?
No, we don't need to back up, but just shout out to our community engagement team, because this was really important data for us to have. And we weren't satisfied by just waiting to see who responded to the form that was sent. It took a lot of strategic engagement to really hear from a greater sampling of our families. So really appreciate all that work. I know there was a lot.
I agree.
I have a quick question as well, or comment, Dr. Brown, and that the response rate, first of all, 84% is impressive, and the numbers of students of color is also very impressive. And the outcomes are almost, are very impressive also. And so it just makes me, you know, looking for some, I'm looking to be skeptical in the data that we're seeing right now, and wondering, now I'm wondering, like, how were the questions asked? Because I find it's really unusual to get that high of a, in just the work that I've done, statistics-wise, it's so, it's hard to get 58, 68% on things. So I'm impressed, and I'm also a tiny bit skeptical, I'll be honest.
So just to add on to that, not skepticism necessarily, but the sort of curiosity about that, because I know this was primarily a sort of a census of who would be going back. And I don't know if this is why Danny Ledesma is sort of on deck here, but I would be interested if we have maybe more in-depth sort of feedback from those families, not just are you coming back, but what are the things you're concerned about, and whether that's something we've reached out to our community partners that are, you know, working in those communities every day, like, aside from just the yes or no, do you want to come back for in-person? But, you know, what do you need to hear? What do you need to know? What sort of supports you need? And I'm wondering if we've asked those questions.
Thank you, because that's the other part, like, we're all getting the same emails. And I think you said skepticism might be a little bit strong of a word, but are, what are we hearing from the opposite percentage? What are, you know, are we, what is not being presented here? I'm hearing from people that absolutely don't want to go back to school. I'm hearing from people that absolutely do want schools to open all the way. And so, you know, I'm trying to do my duty here by diving in and getting the most accurate whole information that's available, if that makes sense.
So there were a lot of different questions in there. And I'm gonna try to take a swing at a couple of those, and then I'd like Danny to lean in. First and foremost, I do want to extend a thank you to our community engagement staff, the folks in our support staff who reached out, made phone calls, building-based teams who made an effort to reach out and engage our families and to contact them. In terms of the survey, the survey was really very simple. And in this work, we have to honor what we're doing in terms of a bargaining right now, and that limited the amount of specificity that we could put in the survey, because there are things that remain to be bargained. The first question, in a verbatim, please tell us more about any additional needs your student may have. Please select all that apply. Help with connectivity issues, academic support, social, emotional, or mental health support, build educator-to-student relationships, in-person peer-to-peer interaction, support ongoing engagement and attendance, and family supports and resources. So we specifically ask folks about those domains. We didn't ask it in an open-ended format, because frankly, that would be really hard to aggregate in a meaningful fashion on this timeline. We did talk about that, and I think Ms. Teal mentioned that a sizable portion of our parents, around 45%, said, you know, they were really interested in-person, peer-to-peer interaction for their students. Another, almost 40%, said, nah, I'm really interested in academic support for my child. And those were the two frontrunners in terms of needs that were identified on that. The next question we ask was simply, how important is it for your student to be able to remain with their teacher for the rest of the school year? And we were interested in that, because obviously, for playing purposes, if we can honor that, we certainly wish to. And then finally, the last sort of main question was, I would like my student to begin hybrid instruction as soon as the opportunity is available, yes or no? It was just simply a yes or no. Do you want your child to begin hybrid if it's available, or not? And again, constraint, one of the limitations, and I appreciate your skepticism, Director DePasso, one of the limitations here was, again, the constraints of what was available in terms of the determinations in terms of bargaining. Now, I'm a relatively conservative person around decision-making. And so, without a lot of information, I would actually expect folks to be disinclined to pick hybrid, because they have to make that leap of faith without a lot of information. Yet, we see roughly 2 out of 3 people who said that, yeah, we're interested in hybrid. And that, again, stayed relatively stable, even though there was a substantial increase in participation. And agreed, this is a census of the student population. Obviously, the first time I've seen a census here, I don't know if this has been done before. And again, it was a real concerted effort to reach out. Now, we had done prior engagement with focus groups in communities of color to try to understand the range of issues and needs, and also with linguistically diverse groups, and we could come back and talk about that another time. But in terms of the survey, the survey was really pretty succinct. And there was one additional question, which, you know, if I answered no to the hybrid, we did ask folks, well, are you interested in limited in-person? And then finally, after that, we asked if folks were interested in transportation, if they were eligible for it. So it was a really short survey. It was very succinct. The language was simple. We had it vetted by a number of folks. It was translated. It was, and again, we made a concerted effort to reach out to a large group of folks, and repeatedly reach out to them, to be able to get more adequate representation. I've covered a bunch of ground. I don't know if I captured Director Brim Edwards' question or not. And if you could rearticulate it, that would be helpful, because I think that's the one for Danny.
I think you did, because while there weren't open-ended questions, I think you mentioned asking what I would say would be the big categories of concerns that I've heard from parents. At some later date, it'd be great to see that sort of click down. So thank you. You did answer the question. But I would, I guess, if Danny Ledesma's prepared to speak about, I don't know if we've engaged any focus groups, or just to get, because there's, in place of open-ended questions, another way of getting feedback is through more direct communications.
Yeah, we have not done a formal survey of our partners and their service, families that they're serving, but we have engaged with our partners in a couple of different ways. So the superintendent convenes our RESJ service partners quarterly. And so last quarter we was, I had that date in my mind, and I just lost it. It was at the end of February, when we met with all 16 of our RESJ partners, the superintendent's leadership team, and our principals. And so we did, we did quite a bit of presenting, but we also looked at some other data, and we had some conversation about reopening. The other place where we are getting information is in those sort of like daily calls. And I think, like you and Director DePasso, our partners are hearing the whole range of sort of opinions around sort of needs and apprehensions from families of color. And so we found that there's, you know, pretty similar responses in terms of what we're hearing from this survey. In a couple minutes, I'll be talking a little bit more about the SUN service system. And we have some data and update about the services that they provided during comprehensive distance learning. And I think that's really instructive of sort of like where the needs are. And there's almost like a symbiotic relationship between the supports and services. You saw that in the survey, we saw in the survey that that wasn't one of the highest needs that families were requesting. And I think there's a pretty corollary relationship with the SUN service system, because that's where they have really gone deep in providing direct client assistance and more of that. So I think you'll be able to hear in a few moments a little bit more about that.
Great. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Thank you, Danny. So, and when we look at, you know, again, parental preferences by race, you know, again, we saw a, some minor changes here, with the exception of changes for our Black and Native American populations. In both cases, as there was an increase in the participation rate of the parents, we saw an increase in the interest for hybrid instruction. And, you know, again, with substantial increases in participation, in both cases, those ticked up. Our other groups showed relatively minor changes, less than 2% drop. And again, overall, a 1.6 percentage point drop overall in interest for hybrid. Again, remarkably stable data, given the increase. Now, you know, to that point, Director DePasso, and Director Brim Edwards, and others, you know, I don't think you're alone getting those emails. We've all been getting lots of emails. There's still roughly, you know, three to four out of 10 people who really don't want to go back to hybrid, that they want to stay in CDL, and they feel pretty strongly about that. Yeah, I think we have a community here where, you know, 6 out of 10, 7 out of 10 people would like their children to go back to hybrid, and someplace between 3 and 4 out of 10 people would like their kids to stay in CDL. And I think both those things are true. And one of the things I think is very clear in this data, when we look at and we disaggregate race, is that, you know, none of these groups are monolithic. Folks within these groups have different opinions about these things and different needs. And, you know, as you're aware from the data that I gave earlier this week around attendance, you know, there's, you know, the burden of the loss of attendance has been borne predominantly by our Black and Native students. Our students of color have borne that loss of attendance, both at middle school, but even more predominantly at the high school level. So, you know, I think, again, there are different ways to look at this. But, you know, again, the bottom line is 2 out of 3 of our parents would like their student to have the hybrid learning opportunity as we move forward.
So, Dr. Brown, back to your point about CDL, and if you wanted to defer this question, because we're going to get into it later in the presentation, that's fine. But I think from the perspective of parents responding to these survey questions, they are likely assuming that any, if they opt into CDL, it's going to be the same as the CDL that they're experiencing now. And I'm interested to know how true or untrue that may be, what exactly what our vision is for CDL, and then also whether there was any nuance around that conversation with families in the survey itself. Like, was there any recognition that CDL could look quite different?
Again, the survey question was pretty straightforward. I just asked whether or not folks were interested in the opportunity to pursue hybrid for their student. So folks who said, no, I'm not interested in hybrid, again, they were asked whether or not they were interested in limited in-person activity, and if they said no to that, again, the assumption was CDL. There was no question that asked people to actively endorse that they wanted to stay in CDL. The question was whether or not they wanted hybrid, or whether or not they wanted Lippi. And then, again, if not, then the option is to remain in CDL. So, next slide, please.
My question about that is, are we sure that the governor is gonna allow us to have CDL? Like, do we know, I think, do we know the details yet of that?
We do not. And I'll come back to that in a moment. So I do want to clear up a little bit of misinformation. I've heard some misinformation about school participation rates. I've heard that in some cases, folks thought school participation rates were really low, or participation rates by communities of color were very low by school, and in fact, they weren't. We have a 70% or better response rate in 9 out of 10 of our buildings at this point, and we have a 70% or better response rate for our non-white families in 7 out of 10 of our schools. Again, we really made an effort to reach out. At this time, none of our schools have a response rate below 60%. And while we didn't reach 100%, this was the first time, as we talked about before, that I'm aware, at least during my tenure, that we've done a census of our students. And while there still is some disparity in terms of response rate, our outreach efforts for all the folks that you thanked, and even more, increased the representation of our communities of color. So I just wanted to clear that up, because, again, we really did make a concerted effort to reach out and hear from people. Next slide, please. Finally, this should come as no surprise. As I mentioned earlier, we ask parents whether or not they wanted their student to remain with their teacher. Overwhelmingly, irrespective whether or not they said they wanted to go to hybrid or stay in distance learning, overwhelmingly, our parents wanted their students to be able to remain with their teacher. This is absolutely our preference as well. There are, however, depending on the model that's agreed upon, there are some challenges to the, as we move forward. And to Director Lowry's question, you know, we've asked our families what they would want. Clearly, folks feel strongly on both sides. I think you've heard people come and present on both sides. I've mentioned before that, you know, I have three children. For two of my three children, I would have likely picked to have them go to hybrid. For one of my children, he actually completed high school in a remote program, an alternative program, and I think CDL would have been a better option for him, and I would have likely picked that. Again, I think it's really important to honor parents' choices. And, you know, we know that the governor really wants to reduce the footprint of CDL, but we would like to offer CDL to those families who have requested it, or stated that that's their preference. And we'll continue to do so until we're told we can't. I think it's important, we've asked people what they want, and I think it's important to honor that as we move forward.
Dr. Brown, so since our last meeting, one of the options, the sort of simulcast option, has been taken off the table, is my understanding? And so the question I have, and that seemed to be an option that you would most likely remain with your teacher, or is, are there other options that preserve that valued relationship that parents have? Or is that just harder to accommodate with the other options?
We're actively working through options right now with the union in terms of that. I think everybody knows that it would be preferable to keep students with their teacher. I don't want to speak out of turn right now, because, again, we're in the process of negotiation. And so I think it'd be inappropriate for me to lean into that a whole lot more. I do think there are ways that that can be accommodated in, without simulcast, for many students. But I do think that, you know, again, as we move forward, there is a not-so-small probability that some students will be reassigned. I think it's unavoidable.
I really appreciate the numbers here, and looking at these three numbers, realizing that we can't both have the, all three of these things can't be true at the same time. But it's almost as if you anticipated some of the questions in terms of how the data was disaggregated by race. And I feel confident that particularly the engagement team did an outstanding job of talking to people, in some cases, probably not super easy to find people. talking to people, in some cases probably not super easy to find people, and it shows in the data. So, thank you, staff.
Thank you again. Next slide, please. I think we're going to be transitioning now to health and safety with Chief Operating Officer Daniel. Thank you.
Good evening, Director Superintendent and Student Representative Shu. Next slide, please. Tonight, I'd like to talk about progress on health and safety and the work that is many months in the making. Just last Friday, we were able to show Governor Brown the many health and safety measures in place when she toured Sidon Elementary. She learned about ventilation and air quality in our schools, took a look at our dedicated symptom rooms and PPE closets, and asked a host of questions about process and procedures. Governor Brown told us she was honestly blown away by the safety protocols in place to keep staff and students safe. Next slide, please. In recent months, our facilities teams have made significant improvements at every school and in all 3,000 classrooms. We have removed, purchased, and rearranged furniture to accommodate physical distancing requirements. Sinage and plexiglass has been installed in every building. Our custodians have been busy prepping the buildings and putting cleaning protocols in place. And I should note that thanks to our hard-working recruiting staff, currently we only have a handful of custodial vacancies. And also, while talking about staffing, I'd like to note that every school will have a school nurse or health assistant present during hybrid to assist with health and safety protocols. Also noteworthy, the building ventilation systems have been inspected to ensure that they are operating properly and have been modified to maximize the amount of fresh air that comes into the building. Ventilation systems now run longer and continuously throughout the day. Third-party assessments have been completed and all noted repairs have been made. I'd also like to note that we will repeat our third-party ventilation inspections every quarter with the next round beginning on April 1st. And out of abundance of caution, we've also purchased portable HEPA filters for every classroom. Our health and safety preparations exceed the requirements of the CDC, OHA, and Wauknuma County Public Health Department, and we are ready for staff and students to return. Next slide, please.
Dan, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, having had some experience with the return to just adults in a facility, it actually required just a whole host of retraining and different practices from sort of the normal routines. And if you go back two slides before the trending topic slides, there was a whole host of protocols. So I'm wondering when the training, so I think right now you have, you know, teachers and school staff, you know, working like, you know, basically conducting comprehensive distance learning. When is sort of this, like, the sort of in-building practice training with the school staff going to happen? Is that going to be centrally led? Is that what, say, for example, at the elementary level is going to happen at the beginning of the week of the 25th? Because my assumption is we're expecting teachers and school staff to go to, you know, to be teaching and supporting our students over the, during school days, and we've got spring break, and then you come back. Is, when are those practices and that training on all these things, which just aren't, some of these things that aren't normal school practices outside of a pandemic?
Yeah, that's a great question. So here on this list, we see a list of some of that layered risk reduction strategy approach. So, most of these are standard operating procedures that are guidance district-wide. We have already been creating different trainings or those videos or the software system, the Pepper training we use, where we go through different slides that give information and other ways to train and communicate to staff. So there is a district-wide level training, and a lot of that has already happened to staff and will, of course, need to happen to more. And then these documents and this guidance informs the school-specific reopening plans. And that's where these are both reinforced, the information that is in these guidance documents, but also additional detail is added. So we'll have standard operating procedure, for example, how to use the restrooms. And so we'll have some documents and some training on what the expectations are for that. And then the school-specific reopening plans will take that to the next level and say, for example, certain classrooms might use one bathroom or other classrooms use another. So that training, some of it has been happening already, but we'll also continue over the next couple of weeks.
But I guess I'm, are we giving, are we building an extra professional development time? Or, I mean, just because during the school day, our assumption, my assumption is that school is happening, so is this happening starting on the 25th, when teachers actually and school staff return to the buildings?
So Director Brim Edwards, we recognize that it would be advantageous to make sure we have an opportunity on campus with all staff and faculty reviewing all the health and safety protocols, that they be clear what the routine is so they can reinforce and teach those. We know it would be advantageous for them to review those with students while they're still in CDL before students show up so that they also have heard it too. We're still in conversations with the teachers' union. We know that we need to return the week of the 29th. I would be surprised if one thing staff lobbies for is that everybody comes back, you know, sort of on the spot the Monday after spring break, knowing that it would be good to have some time with our faculty. So I don't want to get ahead of the staff and some of our thinking, but we know that that makes a lot of sense, that we take the time that we need to make sure everybody's really clear about those protocols. I don't know if you want to say something more about this at this point, Dr. Bird?
Yeah, I think you covered it pretty well. So, and there'll be a combination of trainings. We're also offering some open houses for teachers and partners to come in, and then we'll be announcing those very soon, if they would like to come in and just see how things are set up, since many of them have not been in buildings for a while, so they can just familiarize themselves with the protocols. But there will be formal training that we'll offer, there'll be some pre-service time that we'll offer, and we're in, as we negotiate that, we'll be able to announce more details.
Reading between the lines, sounds like that might take place the week of March 29th.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Can I ask a couple of questions? I hope it'll be brief. I'm getting some questions about PPE, the availability of PPE, and we had public testimony tonight. Can you give us some insight into how we're doing with supplies of PPE and kind of what level of PPE we're using?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have specific guidance for PPE and depending on what that guidance is of how it is obtained, but I can say, I don't have the numbers in front of me, we have well over a million masks, for example, that are in our warehouse, and those have been distributed to the schools. Face shields and then other supplies such as sanitizer and disinfecting wipes, those have all been distributed to the schools. I think there's going to be some effort as some of the schools become more populated over next week to make sure that they get out to all the classrooms. But the PPE and the supplies, we have a really good amount of it right now. We feel good at what our inventory is, and those have been distributed to the sites.
Can you, can you give us a status update on the testing? What kinds of resources are going to be available to us for testing?
That's a good question. I don't have the details on the testing. Let me, let me see if I can't get you some details and respond back later.
Okay, thanks, I'd appreciate it.
No problem.
Before we move on from these health and safety measures, I just want to say that we can't communicate enough to our families and to our educators about what we have done and what is in the works. Because, at least from the families that I talk to, they really have no idea. They have no idea about the HEPA filters, they have no idea about any of the protocols that have been put in place. And so I hope that we start a real campaign of direct communication with our families about what precautions have been put in place.
Along those lines, can I also kind of piggyback on that? And I am, I am really grateful and very pleased at how PPS has gone above and beyond for ventilation. I think it's the care that you've given to doing the inspections and providing, you know, the HEPA filters in every classroom. And I know that many school districts don't have the expertise or the resources in order to be able to do that. So I'm really grateful for that. And I think it's going to be one of those things that I suspect will continue beyond this pandemic. I think ventilation has been an issue in a lot of classrooms for a long time. So this is, I think this is going to have long-term benefits for students and staff as well. So, thank you.
I want to also say, Director Constam, I agree, and I think I mentioned the last time we were together, and I wasn't being facetious about rolling out a communications campaign, knowing it would be a huge lift, because I believe that if people understand that they're vaccinated, that the ventilation system is intact, the purification system is top-notch, it's quilling those fears. And so I think the communication strategy is going to be, yes, it's going to be a big lift, and I think it needs to be done. We need to assure the people coming into our buildings, the entire stakeholders, teachers, students, and families, that they're getting the airflow that's required, that the CDC says is what we need to stem the spread of the virus.
I appreciate the last several comments from directors. It's clear that as we get a more detailed understanding how much a campaign of communication is going to be important. A visual open house tour where you can see that on every school campus, for instance, there's a stocked closet or identified space where all the masks and the PPE and the sanitizers, they're readily available, and how we're making sure to replenish it as we go, and so that families can feel confidence and see visually the routine and the arrows and the signage and what the classrooms look like and some of those. So we are sort of taking the opportunity in this time, given the importance of ramping up our communications. So, and I know our head of communications is listening, and certainly invite him to teleport in here to describe more fully. But you're really going to start to see that kind of activity really, making sure that any questions that we might expect or predict or hear from, that people have clear answers. What we don't want them feeling is any doubt about the readiness of our schools from a health and safety point of view.
And actually, the CDC guidelines for schools said nothing about ventilation, which was severely criticized in a number of quarters. So we are actually going well above and beyond what the CDC has laid out.
I think, Directors, good evening. It's David Roy, and just to follow up on what the superintendent said, I think what you will see really beginning tonight and tomorrow is a much more aggressive, much more accelerated, much more concerted campaign of talking directly to families and to staff. A lot of what Chief Young just talked about are things that we have shared, but doing it in, again, a more concerted way, where you're going to see every day that we are communicating to families and staff about all of these details, you know, the sort of this almost virtual checklist of things that we have done, that Dan's team and others have done to get schools ready so that we can welcome students and staff back safely. You will see that, you'll see that on social, you'll see that student-facing with Chief Garcia's team, doing some student-directed sort of communication. And we talked about earlier today, we want to be sure that families, that students, that staff feel informed, they feel like they know where to go. And so to the superintendent's point, we have dedicated a new landing page, as we did in the spring for HD, as we did over the summer, as we did for the fall for back-to-school. Now we have a new dedicated landing page for reopening, and so anything that has to do with reopening will be there, it'll be easy to find. And we want, we want to allay some of the concerns and anxieties people may have, and they can make a decision based on the facts that we can share with them. So we will be doing a lot of that over a lot of different channels, and again, you will see a great acceleration of that really immediately.
Can I ask a specific follow-up question on the testing? So I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that testing capacity and capabilities are really not within the purview of PPS. So we're going to be dependent on system partners, the state and the county, I believe. Is there, is there something that we can do to, to enhance our capabilities? We're in a very short timeline, so is there anything that we can do to promote as robust a testing capacity as is possible, given the national resources?
All very good questions, Director Moore. I don't have the details with me, but I will get them very soon and get a response back to you and the entire board.
Thanks, David, for your thorough reply as well.
Thank you.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, I think I will be transitioning to Daniel Ledesma.
All right. And that's like the most, the most dangerous phrase in our collective lexicon.
If there are any more questions.
Except for he didn't breathe between, since there aren't any more questions than that, he's fine.
There's half a second in there.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. I'm excited to give you two brief updates to you. You know, throughout the night, you've heard about the resilience, the collaboration, and the adaptability of our district staff and partners. And I'm really inspired by all the talent and commitment people involved in both the planning, the implementation, and leadership behind these updates. So we'll start with limited in-person on the next slide, or Lippi, as you've heard it called. So as a reminder, you know, Lippi is currently being utilized to target, to really target supports to student groups who are most in need. So these are students with educational, relational, social, emotional, curricular, instructional, and assessment needs, so we want to provide those supports to them. And to be able to identify students, school leaders reviewed data, invited students and families directly to participate. And in alignment with the RSSL or the Ready School Safe Learners Guidance, PPS established parameters for cohort size, the number of cohorts in which students participate. And today, as of today, there are 85 sites that are up and operational. So this means that every school, including some pre-kindergarten and MPG or multiple pathways to graduation sites are in operation. And so what this means is that while the student number may grow slightly, the number of sites won't. And so as you can see from the slide, close to about 1,400 students are attending at all of the 85 sites. And 40% of those students who are participating identify as Black or Latino. And so we wanted to let folks know that we'll continue to operate Lippi as we transition into the hybrid instructional model and give you this update. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So the next update is about our partnership with the SUN. This year, we expanded, this school year, we expanded SUN school sites by two, adding partnerships to Rosa Parks and to Cairo's PDX, both who are being paired with SEI or Self-Enhancement, Inc. And that brings our total up to 45 sites where we have community school partnerships. Many of us associate SUN with after-school activities or extended learning or those community school sites. But our partnership with SUN is really robust and includes extended learning, P3, early kindergarten transition, youth advocacy, and food pantries. And from April to July of this year, approximately 2,800 students and families, on average, have been served each month. And the, about roughly 59% of the SUN community schools and P3 And the, about roughly 59% of the SUN community schools and P3 participants are students of color. The metric changed mid-reporting stream, so I'm going to give you two pieces of information. From April to July, our SUN food pantries distributed 21,815 meals at various PPS sites. And from August to November 2020, the food pantry provided food to 12,139 households. So the metric shifted from the number of meals to the number of households being served. So as you can tell by these figures, our SUN partners have adapted and continued providing services to PPS students and families during CDL. SUN partners have really tried to shift their focus to meet the pressing needs of students and families. And so what they have focused in during CDL has really been around meeting the direct needs of families. A lot of families are utilizing services such as rent assistance and/or energy assistance. And families are really seeking more and more support with resource navigation. So since the pandemic, Multnomah County have, Multnomah County, in partnership with all of the districts in Multnomah County, commissioned a report from Education Northwest to surface what are the best practices and recommendations for school-based service delivery during the pandemic. And so the folks at Northwest did a sort of comprehensive literature scan, looked at what other districts were doing across the country, and developed the report. And that report really served as the foundation that the county used to develop their guidance for SUN partners and for districts as we think about in-person services. So we are actively engaged in planning for in-person services along with our return to schools with our SUN service partners and Multnomah County staff. We anticipate that we'll be able to offer phased services with, at our school sites pretty soon. We met as early as this, as recently as this afternoon to plan that. And I think our SUN, our SUN service partners are really looking forward to continuing to partner with PPS and to collaborate with our principals to be able to offer some of those really essential services in person. That's all for the two updates. And so I think we'll open it up to questions for the group.
Well, since nobody else is jumping in, although somebody else can go since I've asked a number of questions. But this is a more general question, and it's about the sequencing. It's been really helpful to hear the plans about communication, the training, the changes in practices that are going to be underway in order to better serve our, to serve our students with the most recent announced change and the change in the caseloads. And if I look at the sequencing, so a lot of this has been focused on the K5s, which is the students, which is the most immediate. I'm wondering if we're going to be surveying. At one point, a couple of board meetings ago, there'd been a discussion about a survey of middle school and high school parents and whether we're going to do something similar that we did for elementary school parents. Or is it a completely different set of questions, given just the nature of the change, the difference in the schedules and what's happened during the school day for those students?
I can answer that, Director Brim. We are, our high school and middle school principals have been working on different plans, and we are close to having those completed to share with PAT. And then we will be also reaching out to families. It'll be a survey similar to the one that elementary had. But we'll have, now that we have more details from the governor about what is possible, what is not possible, and Ready School Safe Learners is being updated, we'll have some more information to provide, we'll provide a little more clarity, hopefully. But, you know, there are challenges with middle school and high school, basically the cohort size and the physical distancing requirements. So that does present different challenges than elementary schools have for reopening.
Yeah, although we also have, there's some advantages, like, for example, virtual scholars or just all this year, we have some models of what comprehensive distance learning or some different models are already at the high school level. I guess this is the same question that was asked by Director Konstam. For middle school and high school students, will there be this, the option of either the hybrid in-person, whatever model we come up with, or to remain in comprehensive distance learning? Or is that still not clear yet from the guidance that we're getting, that we haven't yet received from the governor?
I think we're clarifying that guidance. But any in-person activities will be, you know, focused on learning support, credit recovery for high school students and for juniors, seniors, and other learning activities for middle school students as well as high school.
Thank you. Student over the end of shoe, did you have any questions?
Not at the moment, but thanks for asking.
I know that sometimes we all just jump in, and it can be a little daunting to find your voice in there. So I just wanted to make sure we had that space for you. Are there any further questions from the board? Director Bailey?
Yes, thanks. First of all, Danny, thanks for the update. It's, you know, that's, again, confirming how important our investment has been with our community partners, that they have stepped up and changed their role to really serve the fundamental needs of families, has been really important. Going back to what hybrid is going to look like and recognizing that we're still in discussions, we've had the occasional letter saying, gee, instead of, you know, two hours, four days a week for elementary, why not ABA B a full day? And how that would be an easier arrangement for some parents in terms of childcare when their child isn't in school. Could you briefly summarize the pros and cons? I can think of some, but I...
Sure. So, yeah, there definitely are pros and cons to every model. I think the biggest barrier for the in-person all-day is that we have, then we would have children eating in schools. And so that presents problems in terms of, you know, removing the mask, supervision. Also, you know, where do they eat? Because they can't necessarily sit next to each other in a cafeteria. If you're eating in class, then who's supervising those students? Because teachers have a right to duty-free lunch. And so there are some logistical issues that make that problematic. Many of our schools don't have cafeterias large enough to provide the physical distancing, even for a reduced number of students in the school. So that does cause some issues. So that's why, and also there's a value in seeing that children, four days a week, as opposed to just two days a week. Even though it's a shorter period of time, there's some value in getting those kids into routine, especially the youngest ones who have not been to school, you know, to brick-and-mortar school. Getting them in frequently, even for a short distance of time, a short span of time, is seen as advantageous by some.
And the other reason I was thinking of for those families that were, with students who rely on us for a meal or two a day, having them be there more days than not makes that distribution easier.
Right. So we'll be opening up more kitchens across the district to satisfy that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I think, I think we don't know the answer to this, but I was, in terms of changes to the RSSL guidance, you know, my read of the governor's announcement and letter was that she was asking, you know, ODE and OHA to essentially revisit some of these guidelines to facilitate this reopening. Do we have any sense of what some of those changes might be? And assuming that the answer to that is no, we don't know. We're waiting for that executive order and the guidance to come out. Are we still going to be ready? I mean, I guess, I guess the question is, are we strategizing for an opening under our existing guidelines, but then recognizing that maybe even after we open, a couple of weeks down the road, we might pivot as those guidelines change?
So I can share that this afternoon, Superintendent statewide had another regular meeting with Oregon Department of Ed Director Colt Gill and members of his team. And there are a few items that have been continually surfacing where flexibility, in some cases, is desired. One of those key ones is the social distancing requirement. If we're held to a six-foot rule, then that places a constraint on student bodies in a learning space. If it's three to six feet, that changes or gives other flexibilities. The other element that continues to come up and came up again today is cohort size. That also makes a difference into how many students we can welcome back or what models we can present. So they were vocalized again today. There wasn't an indication from Department of Education, who's gathering this input and feedback, you know, which direction or if any adjustments will be made in those two areas or others in their newer, newest version, which we don't expect until early next week at the earliest, was what we were told. If they don't issue this until close to the end of next week, most of the state is going on spring break. So if you're changing the guidelines, districts aren't going to be able to do too much with a day or two's notice before an expected week of return. So we're hoping to hear, you know, a little bit more definitively what that, what those new guidelines may be by Monday, hopefully.
Superintendent, Andrew, can I ask a quick follow-up? I have a, I have a question about that. So obviously, our focus now is on K5, but are we asking our middle and high school principals to devise plans based on the current guidelines? Are we giving them some space with the assumption that those guidelines are going to change within the next couple of weeks?
So we're asking them to devise plans based on what we know today, which we believe is the most restrictive. It's always easier to go less restrictive than it is to dial it back. So we're planning for the most restrictive environment. If something changes, then we can always modify that.
My next thing is not a question so much as a statement. I just wanted to go back to something Dr. Brown said, because I think it's really important about the diversity of opinion. And we've talked about this before at our meetings. But the survey data is really, really helpful because we are getting a lot of different opinions. And so getting a more scientific, you know, sense of where folks are in the disaggregated data, just really appreciate that. But regardless, right, even though we're seeing, you know, significant majorities that want to come back, there's also significant minorities that don't. And I think it's so important for all of us to remember that, you know, that these are all of our students and all of our families. And it's why I think what you've come up with so far about allowing for the options is so important. The way you do any change management is, you know, you bring along the early adopters, and then you bring along the people on the fence. And then the folks who are really resistant are going to see what's going on and feel more comfortable and confident. So I just, all along, I think the superintendent, you and your team have thought about that and presented those options. And it's going to continue to be really important going forward because, you know, those 30% that are reluctant have really good reasons for being reluctant. And we need to show them that we can do this safely and give them the confidence to send their kids back to school. So thanks for all that.
I think that that's really wise, Andrew, and that's why I asked the question about CDL being an option, because I think it should continue to be. But I think we need to be really transparent with our families about what the governor is asking us to do and what those limitations are, and, you know, encourage advocacy as needed there. And I do think, you know, the, all of, all students are our students. And so how do we, how do we create space for all of them? Director Bailey?
Yeah, and to, again, communicate repeatedly that families with medical vulnerabilities will take care of them in a safe way. And if in-person isn't going to work for them for some very good reasons, that CDL will be available.
Any further comments or questions on this item? Amy? Director Konstam? You're muted. Director Konstam?
Sorry about that. One thing that's still not clear to me, Superintendent or Chief Byrd, is the degree of autonomy or independence our building-level teams have in creating these plans. Because when we, through the negotiation process, walked back a little bit on the simulcast plan, the language that I heard was that buildings could have discretion in determining how they were going to manage CDL and how they were going to manage other aspects of their return to hybrid learning. So if somebody could give me an overview of the amount of discretion that individual principals and their teams have, that would be helpful.
I'll let Dr. Byrd speak to this, but I'm sure everyone can understand you can't have a one-size-fits-all because every building is a different size, different enrollment, different configuration, different space constraints. And so we'll be offering guidance around the general format for the model that we'll be implementing. But out of necessity, just like with LIPPI, we'll need to sort of at the campus level, rely on our school administrators to really work with their faculties and the specifics of their parents' wishes and choices, you know, to make it work. But Dr. Byrd can talk further about how our principal supervisors and support team are working with our school leaders.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent. So, you know, we're providing a framework, we're building a framework with, which people need to conform, you know, fit in their programs. But there will be some individual differences. The goals of the program, though, are academic enrichment and intervention. So the programs will need to be academic in nature. And then, but what they do, you know, like, there are some configurations of schools that allow teachers to easily keep their students because of the demand. So that, you know, half, they can teach half their students live in person in the morning, and the students who choose to remain home, they can teach them in the afternoon. That's one option. There's some, there's some nuances for our dual immersion programs that we have to address. So, you know, every, every school will look a little different, but there'll be a framework by which they operate under. And the same is true for elementary, middle school, excuse me, for middle school and high school. Those principals have been working on designing a framework that they can operate under. But as you know, we have some high schools that are on four-by-four schedules, some are on eight-period schedules. So there'll be some differences in what the time looks like in this building. But the principles will be similar.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? I'm going to have us take a break before we come back to policy, but is there anything else before we do that?
I just had one question, but maybe it can be a request for a future board meeting. But there is, last week, the governor and legislative leaders announced $215 million in summer learning and childcare grants that divided into like a, into a number of buckets. And I was wondering if that's something that we're going to pursue and how it would fit with our, I know we've, there's already been discussions internally at PPS about summer learning programs. And so I'd be interested in just getting a brief as we think about how this sequence out on what our, what our strategy is, on a pretty significant amount of resources that will be available this summer.
Agreed, Dr. Director Brim Edwards. And we did get a breakdown of that overall resource that looks like it will be available to districts on a formula distribution. We will, of course, want to exploit and incorporate that resource in all its buckets to support our priorities, certainly for learning, acceleration, and support. But there's other components to that resource being made available at the, at the state level, which I think works really well with our existing partnerships, with some of the other elements like childcare and enrichments and ways that are going to complement our efforts this summer. There were a lot of good questions asked earlier this afternoon by superintendents as they think about extended learning for the summer and ways to support our students. I was glad to see that, you know, there's flexibility in there to continue doing social, emotional work as well, but also an emphasis not just on academic interventions, but also enrichments this summer. Again, is another opportunity to engage our students, especially in the arts and other areas. So we're definitely keeping a close eye on it. And as directions become much more clear, we'll be happy to talk with directors at a later date about how we'll be availing ourselves for making sure direct services go out to our students.
Great. Really appreciate that.
Thanks for asking that question, Julia. And I'd just like to piggyback on it and say, when you do get back to us, we'd like to hear more about some of the specific carve-outs that showed up in the final version of the federal package as well, including some different uses for pre-K money and some different special education funds. So as much as you can tell us about plans for that would be helpful, too.
All right. Thanks, everybody. This was a really great and thorough report. Sorry, Superintendent, were you going to add something?
I was only going to say, all of our budget conversations, we'll make sure to start talking about SER3 and a significant sort of relief package that'll come to LEAs and state agencies across the country. One feature in there that I'm appreciating seeing is, looks like an emphasis on boosting IDEA or Special Education Service monies for states and districts, which certainly will be helpful. That's just one element. There's a lot of other ingredients into that relief package. And we'll, of course, make sure that we account for it and to resource our priorities here at PPS.
All right. We are going to take a break until 9:06, a five-minute break. And Director Moore, would you like to introduce this next item?
Yes, thank you. This policy, we're talking about the comprehensive health education policy. And this policy was originally approved in 2018 as the comprehensive sexuality education policy with the understanding that it would be reviewed every two years in conformance with state statutes. Staff recently recommended that the sexuality education policy be embedded in a larger policy around comprehensive health education to align with current best practices. The goal of these revisions to the current comprehensive sexuality education policy is to make the policy inclusive of the many laws, mandates and policies that support comprehensive health education. Staff proposed transitioning from a standalone comprehensive sexuality education policy to a comprehensive health education policy, which includes a section specific to comprehensive sexuality education. The Board Policy Committee approved and recommended moving forward the proposed changes to the board for first reading.
That was very efficient. Thank you. All right, that's all we have for that one. So now we get to move on to the second reading of the preservation, maintenance and disposition of real property policy.
Thank you, Jenny Worthen, Sarah Davis.
Yes, just before we leave the previous policy, they did great work. They presented us with a a very polished draft that was comprehensive and understandable, plain English, but but really comprehensive. So, thank you. Okay, this policy, the current policy on preservation, maintenance, disposition and district and disposition of district real property was last revised in 2018. The proposed amendments are intended to respond to some operational issues that have emerged over the last several years to align the policy more closely with our overarching racial education, racial equity and social justice framework and to clarify the board's intent on management of the district's real estate. On February ninth, the Board of Education had a first reading of the revised policy. In response to feedback we received during the public comment period, the Board Policy Committee met yesterday and considered several amendments to the policy draft that was first read by the board on on the ninth. These latest amendments are intended to explicitly embed the principles of racial equity and social justice in our stewardship of district properties in service to our educational mission now and for generations in the future. The board approved moving the amendments to the policy forward today for a second reading. Although the latest amendments are clarifications of the board's intent, the specific language changes, a relatively minor additions or reordering of language that was present in the document first read on February ninth and were the subject of several public meetings of the policy committee. Therefore, the contracted general counsel has advised that the board can elect to move forward tonight with the second reading and adoption. That's it.
Rita, you are frozen.
Which is what the policy seemed like for a while.
Very long time.
I've been frozen for most of the evening, but did you hear what I said?
Not at the end. Most of what you said, I think.
We heard, yes, I think we heard most of it. I think our our task now is to decide if we are going to move forward with the second reading and adoption. Is that correct, Ms. Large? Okay.
I approve that we move ahead with the second reading with the amended version.
My second up.
Okay, so this is not moving the policy, this is moving the version. Is that correct? And then we'll have
amended policy.
For the policy, Ms. Large?
The resolution is drafted, acknowledges and approves moving forward with the amendments that were voted out of the policy committee yesterday. So unless there's objection, that can be done in a single motion and vote.
Okay, so we'll do we'll do that Director Brim Edwards moves and Director Konstant seconds the adoption of Resolution six two six six as presented. And then we can discuss it. Great. Does that work, Director Brim Edwards and Director Konstant? Okay, so Director Brim Edwards moves and Director Konstant seconds the adoption of Resolution six two six six. Is there any board discussion?
So go ahead, Director.
Well, I just want to say thanks to the policy committee, both for all the work from the very beginning on this because this was a pretty hairy rewrite of this policy. And it's substantially different, both in tone and posture and language and intent, really. It's a it's very much a different way of valuing our assets and how they serve our overall goals as an organization. So this was not easy. So I want to commend the policy committee for doing the dirty work. And I also want to thank the policy committee for going back and making these minor amendments. I had a couple of issues that I had raised that were of concern to me that I feel like have been adequately addressed. And I also want to thank the policy committee for being open to the input from some of our trusted partners here. They've been kept in a good place.
I want to thank Kairos specifically for the letter they wrote to the board at our last board meeting, asking us to reexamine this and to really think thoughtfully. And I also want to extend thanks to our staff, especially Ms. Large and Ms. Ledesma for walking through this, being thought partners and talking through how could we make this even more responsive? All right, I see that Director
I'm also, yes, I'm, thank you for acknowledging me. I think I cut you off there. I I also feel really happy to see the land acknowledgement in there. I'm happy that we're following a trend of other institutional partners in Portland that are acknowledging, not only acknowledging land, but in some cases even giving giving buildings back, which I know this policy does not say. But I feel like this is a kind policy for our current students and for future generations. I love the land acknowledgement and love the flexibility that's been built in around here. So also thanks to the policy staff for policy committee for just working on the wordsmithing. And I think, Amy, you said the tenor and the tone of the of the document is just feels gentler and more equitable. Appreciate Danny Ledesma's work. I can see it in this document as well.
Director Bailey? Oh, sorry. Sorry, Julia, I saw that Director Bailey had unmuted. Did you have something to add, Director Bailey?
I'll wait till others have spoken.
Director Brim Edwards?
Yes, I wanted to speak both to the underlying policy changes, but also the most recent amendments. And to the underlying policy changes, having been involved in the drafting and redrafting of this over almost two decades. What I think is really important in the policy is that we recognize that our buildings and our facilities are really substantial assets of the district and that they can either be used in ways that harm or support our communities. And that I think the adjustments that have been made in this policy that recognize there may be instances in which we we always have a fiduciary responsibility to to the district and to use our assets to their highest and best use. And this policy now acknowledges that there are times that there will be other equally important, if not more important aspects and values that we need to consider when either we're leasing a facility or in those rare instances where we may sell a property. And I think we've added some flexibility in here that I hope will in the future address some of the historic wrongs that the district has engaged in in terms of, you know, where it open, closed, expanded facilities, especially in Albina. And so that's to the overall policy. I think it's, I'm looking forward to how it gets put into practice. And then second, just to the amendments, was that a question, there was a question yesterday in committee, I had two board meetings ago, read the letter that Kairos had sent. And there wasn't a specific, you know, we, there's this item that needs to be changed, but more just a general reaction to the policy. And I want to thank the board and the committee for their openness to look at the amendments and to then have them adopted by the committee. And I had run them by Kairos and I was asked yesterday, or was it, yes, yesterday, whether they were supported by Kairos. And I wanted to just provide a response because I didn't, I I thought I knew the response, but I didn't want to speak for them at the at the meeting without getting assurance that I could do that in public. So I can today say that the amendments that were mentioned the last board meeting, that were then considered yesterday, that they are supported by the Kairos board. And I think if it wasn't nine o'clock at night on a night where there's lots of other things happening, we would have a state no support. But I've been assured that I can share that they're supportive of the amendment. So appreciate everybody's work and the receptiveness and the and the discussion, the good discussion we had in in committee about our sort of our values and how we we want to engage with our community partners. So thanks to everybody on the board, and I'm looking forward to after seven months in committee, seeing this move.
I have a couple. Scott, is it okay? Do you want to go? This is this is more for for just to help me, and I apologize, I was not able to watch the policy committee in its entirety. So I am, you know, so some of these things I think were discussed in in policy committee. And I also did not have time to go back to all the different versions. So I I am looking at the the, you know, I think the final amended one that that's coming to us, right? The the final amendments of March eighth, twenty twenty one. But again, I'm not sure what was in here necessarily before and what's not. I'm just sort of reading the policy in its entirety. So with that preface, specifically focusing on these sections around the presumption of market terms, which I think is is where a lot of this discussion has been. I'd like to hear from policy committee members. So I I believe the language we had discussed earlier, although it doesn't really matter, the language that's in here, which I fully support the direction of this, by the way, I want to say that upfront. So, you know, right now it says, you know, that we can only pursue, you know, we're going to pursue maximum, you know, market value and and current market terms unless we adopt a resolution that makes an express finding that the transaction, you know, involving district property of less than market value, you know, one, can offer significant benefit to the district and communities it serves. And then including, you know, application of our racial equity and social justice policy. And then two is with another party that has some official connection with the district. And I support all of that. It makes total sense to me. It's the right way to go. Am I right that sort of the latest amendments that were added were were sub paragraphs A, B and C? Is that right?
So there were actually two layers of amendments. So the the amendments that were discussed at the previous, the last board meeting and then that that were circulated, and I'm sorry, I didn't circulate them to the noncommittee members, did two things that I can outline. And then on top of that, Director Chair Moore, the policy committee chair Moore, had an additional amendment as well. But what what the first set of amendments did was essentially say, both in our leases and our sales, that they would be more closely connected to our racial equity and social justice goals. And also that we'd be using the racial equity and, I'm sorry, the racial educational equity policy lens in when we're looking at those transactions. In addition, the other thing that the amendment did is there was a provision that a couple of months ago had been one of the many criterias that would be considered in the express findings. And that that specific criteria actually got moved from one of several criteria up to be a sort of a gatekeeper criteria. And that was related to the sort of extraordinary economic or unusual circumstances. And what what we did is the the committee amendment was move that back down to one of several criteria versus being the the gate, a gatekeeper criteria. And then second, and Director Moore, you can speak to this. Director Moore proposed at the committee sort of a new gatekeeper criteria, which is essentially just taking one of the, here's one of many criteria and moving it up, elevating it. And Director Moore, I don't have it right in front of me, but can you reach which one that you elevated to be the gatekeeper? Not the gatekeeper, that's, but it's more the overarching
It's a, it's right, it's kind of threshold criterion.
Better than
Okay, first of all, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
That's an improvement. Okay, so the, if you look at the previous document, so the document that was first read on February ninth, in this list of criteria to be considered, there was a D which read official connection of the other party to the district or its enrolled students or or students expected to enroll in PPS with examples. And it occurred to me that that one probably ought to be the threshold criterion that if we and my example was theoretically, I don't think this is currently the case, but theoretically it's possible that PPS would potentially lease a property to a a private for profit for profit company that might have a business completely disconnected from the PPS educational mission. And it would not, it would not advance the cause of our our students' best interest to you know, to give such an entity, you know, a cut rate on a lease.
Yeah, great.
But it's a very different thing. So anyway, that that criterion is now embedded in the paragraph that you read.
Okay, no, that's actually, that that explanation is very helpful in terms of understanding the construction and how we ended up. Because here's my question, and it's not so much about substance, but it is about construction. And and I really appreciate that because I I do agree with you. I think that that connection to the district probably should be a gatekeeper criteria. And and I also agree, Director Brim Edwards, that the, I guess, the extraordinary circumstances should be a factor, but not necessarily a gatekeeping factor. And 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to necessarily offer an amendment to this. I just, I, when I read, when I read some paragraph B in this section, offering below market terms can offer significant benefit to the district or its students, and that benefit outweighs the the cost. That seems very repetitive to me of 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 number one, up above, that it can offer significant benefit to the district and the communities it serves. So that that seemed that seemed repetitious is take that into account. And then similarly with with C, the communities being served by the other party include a substantial portion of underserved students, students of color, et cetera, you know, seemed very consistent with up above where we talked about, you know, consistent with the district's racial educational equity policy. And so the only one of those three sub paragraphs that seemed to add to the policy was around the extraordinary circumstances, which seemed to be the board saying, when we make this express finding, there's lots of different ways we can make it. But by the way, the board really wants to take into consideration this, you know, express, you know, the or these extraordinary economic circumstances, which is fine. The others seemed repetitive. Again, you guys have been through way too much to amend it. So I I'm more, I kind of wanted to hear a little bit how we got to this point because right now it just, it reads a little bit. To to me, the construction ran a little repetitive when I went through that.
Director Scott, did you, did you look at the redlined policy? I, when I finally got to that, it really helped clarify for me sort of the gist of the rationale for why things were, the content was moved around. And that extraordinary circumstances, you know, paragraph was put in there. I just to because you were comparing side I just, because you were comparing side by side.
Yeah, I think, I Sorry, I think I am in the, the red line, but
Other two paragraphs are redundant with the above, but I would rather err on the side of being really explicit about those values at the risk of being redundant than to leave anything ambiguous. But I, you're right.
I think, and I think given where we are, I, I agree with you, Director Constant. I think what, maybe what, the only thing I want to just put on the record, in general, my preference, policy should be policies. If we have specific circumstances, as we do with Kairos, I would rather that the board make a statement that, you know, assuming it's consistent with the, you know, the policy, that we would like to see a change, you know, we'd like to see, you know, Kairos treated this way under, under the existing policy, rather than write a policy geared towards dealing with the Kairos situation. That would be my preference moving forward. But again, I recognize where we've been through this. And, and again, I fully support the direction of this. So, so I'm not, I'm not going to make an amendment. I just, I wanted to raise that on the record.
So can I just add one thing? And, and this might help explain why we wanted to be a bit more explicit than we might be otherwise. Kairos is not the only only instance of an entity leasing a PPS property and requesting a below market rate leasing terms. So i- in order to, in order to make the intent as clear as possible, in order to, to make it easier to operationalize by staff, we, I mean, that's why we went into some detail about what criteria we wanted staff to consider when negotiating lease terms.
So the other thing I, I would add also is that language, you know, we started this process seven months ago or so. So that was like top of mind. You had 14% unemployment. I mean, there were, there were lots of things happening and that was a little bit top of mind. And I'll, I'll just speak for myself that you know, as we got into it and thinking about as the policy and this having longer lasting impacts and wanting it to stand the test of time, that that shouldn't, and, and thinking about land and our facilities as really assets that we can apply to our mission and the things that are most important to us. That's when that, that sort of dropped down, for me at least, on the list of being the driver in the policy. Like this isn't a reaction to, I mean, it was, it was initially as a immediate like reaction to the current set of economic circumstances, but also a real realization that overall, we have, you know, we're probably the second largest property owner in the city of Portland and you know, how we use those assets also help us live our values and that that's why we those other factors, I think, speak to, speak to that versus the sort of economic crisis piece that really was a little bit of the impetus for this.
Yeah, so this started out, I believe, mostly as a response to that. And in policy, we didn't have any way to say, wow, there's an emergency going on. We have tenants who have been, you know, crushed by circumstances beyond their control. Would there be cases where we would lower their rent in order, for a short term, in order to help them through? And so the, the whole initial discussion was around what are the circumstances where we might do that? But then the discussion morphed into something longer term. So what we have now is not would we offer a short-term subsidy? But would we rather perhaps have a long-term some subsidy of below market rates for some of our tenants? And we should realize that if we're subsidizing somebody, that means we're basically spending money. And we're, we're, we're bringing less money in and therefore we have to cut money somewhere else. So if we're doing that kind of subsidy, we should do it for a very good reason. And why I will be voting no on the policy, even though I agree with a lot of the improvements that we've been made, is that we haven't explicitly tied the benefits of the, what kind of benefits we would be getting from that kind of subsidy. So the last couple of years, we have really, you know, as a board, our superintendent and our, our senior staff in the community, we've really brought a focus to this district. Through our vision process, through our board goals, through a lot of the strategies that have been put in place. And again, we've, we've got the framework, but not a final strategic plan. But we see that and that's a real focus. On number one, on the achievement of Black and Indigenous students. And part of the work that we've done is that while we've had relationships with community partners, we've, we funded them in the past, we've changed that relationship so that the contracts that we have with them, they're really focused on our goals and aligned with our strategies going forward. And I totally support that. And we've seen the last couple of years, we've really increased our investment in those partners. We, we're seeing that pay off. You know, we talked about it tonight with the, the work that they've been doing, supporting our families in this time of great need. What we're doing in this policy though, is enabling basically supporting a few organizations, just the ones that lease with us and giving them a cut rate. And not, and, and that's a completely different way of going about things compared to a process where we have an RFP, a request for proposals, that's open to all organizations serving or wanting to serve our high priority students. Where that's tied to our goals and our strategies so that we're on the same page. And instead, we're having, we're, we're basically offering, and it's again, it's monetary, it affects what we can do. We're doing it a way where it's not tied directly to that. And I think that's, if we want to support community organizations serving our high priority students, and we do, and we're doing it, I think we should do it through the framework that we have worked really hard to co-construct with our partners. That's really focused. It has accountability, not only for our partners, but for us and how we spend our money, that it's focused on the achievement of those students. And what we have, what's possible here is not something we do short-term in an emergency, but something we might do long-term for only a handful. And if I were another community organization who wasn't leasing space from us, I'd come and say, hey, will you come pay part of our rent? You know, it creates a real uneven ground from that point of view. So I don't, I don't think that part of it cuts the mustard. I don't think we're really living into our, our equity values there, which again, it's not just a statement, but it's very much tied to our focus on raising student achievement for those students.
I'm just finding the use of your language right now troubling. I'm glad you're honest with, you know, how you felt about it and hopefully you're, you're in the minority. But using an equity lens is, I mean, just the use of like the word enabling and cut rate. This policy is not saying we're going to give anything away. We are all, you know, stewards of, you know, public assets here. We can't just give a cut rate on something. I think the policy allows for some flexibility in, in addressing our leases. And, and, and having a conversation about whether those leases and giving them what you're calling a cut rate, and I'm calling a, something completely different. The, you know, to, to see if they're meshing with our, with our, with our board goals and the outcomes we want for our students. And using an equity lens is actually, as is applying more resources to where there's more need. It's not equally distributing resources. It's, it's, it's targeting attention to where there's more need.
Director DePass, I couldn't agree more with what you just said. And I think what this policy does is it elevates our values and our commitments to all of our students, especially our historically underserved students over our monetary interest. And I think we've done a good job with it. And I appreciate your comments, Michelle.
Thank you. I think that the policy is a both and. And it's not coming from a place of scarcity. It's not coming from, this is a piece of pie and my piece is bigger than yours. It's really, it is really living into the values and I'm, I'm really proud of the work of the policy committee and I'm proud to see another example of the district putting its money where its mouth is around this equity. Because giving everybody equal resources is what we have demonstrated now in terms of who's achieving and who isn't. That's what equitable distribution looks like. And that's, that's why we need to do more targeted investment where, where there's more need.
Well, I, apparently I wasn't clear because you're not understanding what I was saying. I'd be glad to talk to you with you.
No, I think I really did understand though, which is why I was commenting.
I don't think you did.
I, I think that for me with this policy, when we first, when we first received the letter, I think my journey was that we had tried to be really thoughtful about this. And it, it really began to have me question like what I understand fairness to be. And as we think about, you know, I think what, what I'm hearing Director Bailey say is that he wants us to be accountable and make sure we're using our resources wisely. And I, I think for me, this policy, and as I talked, I, I mentioned earlier that Ms. Ms. Large and Ms. LaDesma were great thought partners in this work. Like what really is fairness and how do we, how do we, especially as a white woman who's benefited from a system that, that seems fair to me, right? But actually isn't what we would call fair. How do we think in new ways? And how do we redistribute resources and how do we think about accountability? So I sensed from Director Bailey, this, this longing for us to make sure we're managing our resources well, lifting up the accountability work we've done, all the vision, all the pathways we've taken to really try to make the district transparent and clear. And that there's something about this that, that bumps up against that. And for me, I, I see that. And I also know that, that the, the ways we act now, sort of this moving beyond fairness, you know, what as a white person I think is fair to this place of, how can we really, really begin to radically change the systems and paths we've been on? And, and I feel like this policy is a step. And as Michelle, you said the other night, when we talked about like, you know, we both need to change now and we also have to be creating the right future. We can't just wait. But I feel like this policy is a good first step in some of that work of equity, of really changing how we prioritize and, and how we think about when we come to systems like real estate, fairness and equality, like what those really mean. And how do we begin to adjust what those long-held patterns have been? Because the reality, I mean, is we look at gentrification, generational wealth, all of those, those things that we're aware of in our community, it takes actions like this to really have us begin to live into a new way. And, and so that's why I'm going to wholeheartedly and with joy support the policy tonight.
That's right. And I want to say just two more things. I just want to share a brief statistics with you. So most of you know, I was accepted into a fellowship that works to create anti-racist school boards. And we've only met one time, you know, about 10 days ago, you know, half day on a Friday, half day on a Saturday. And this statistic was shared. So Secretary of Education's have been 92% white. Superintendents currently 93% white. So we're, we're, we're an exception to the rule. Principals in our nation's buildings are 80% white. Teachers are 82% white. Professors at the college level are 81% white. And school boards are 80% white. The presidents and leadership of school boards are 96% white. And our student bodies nationally are about 47% non-white. And, you know, I come from a big family, so I know exactly, I'm very well-versed in the topic of fairness. You know, we talked about it, we didn't have a television. So we discussed fairness all the time. And as a black, you know, PPS product of PPS, and as a person that grew up in a big family that talked about fairness, I can look around now at this stage of my life and see that what I thought was fair distribution didn't end up in, in fair outcomes. I also want to mention that when we're talking about equity work and/or change management work, it might feel funny to us at first, like we're giving away the store. It might feel like other people are getting more and it's unfair. And that's, I just want to like lean into, encourage everybody to lean into that discomfort because that's when we know we're doing the work. It's never gonna, it's not gonna feel comfortable. It's gonna feel like you're giving something away and that's when you know you're doing the equity work. You're gonna feel it in your body. It's gonna feel wrong. It's gonna feel unfair. It's gonna feel uncomfortable. And that's, that's what embodied operationalizing this work feels like in the body. It's, it's a really, this is a really great policy. I think it is a step in the right direction. I'm really proud of the work the committee did. And, and, and we should feel uncomfortable.
Michelle, when you say we're giving something away, what I was thinking about before is that we're actually paying a debt.
From Too. If you look at the history of, we don't have to tell, I don't have to tell you this. Our country was built on the taking of labor and land. And we don't know how to not do that. We're, we're grappling with that right now in Portland, in this room. The, the idea that land was stolen, that labor was stolen, that created this system of capitalism that benefited white people. These people I just read the statistics from. And doing this, adopting this policy is doing something different than that. Which is why I'm really proud of it. It's doing something different. It does feel different. It is different. And hopefully we'll have, you know, we'll have different outcomes. More equal, equitable. Hopefully those will show up in test scores down the line.
One, one of the things I appreciate about this board is that we can have these conversations. And Director DePass, I thank you for speaking up, bringing this forward as we continue to, to live into our values. Is there any further discussion on the resolution that is before us?
Yeah.
Nathaniel, go ahead. Representative Shu.
Yeah, so it seems to me from what I've been hearing, that these revisions are certainly a considerable improvement from the current policy as well as from previous amendments. And I do agree with what Director DePass has said and I intend
You're muted, Nathaniel. Nathaniel, sorry.
I think my headphones might just be breaking. When did you lose me? When did I lose you?
Support.
Director DePass, I'm on support.
Oh, yes. And I do intend to vote yes on the policy. But I am a bit concerned about how there has only been a day between when the amendments were finalized and when we are voting to approve. And really doesn't allow me, much less the public, to truly read through the policy and make a fully and develop a fully informed opinion. I was in at the policy committee meeting yesterday. Perhaps you already discussed this, but I'd be interested in hearing why that process is like that.
So for what it's
Can I respond to that? And I think that I, I addressed it in, in my remarks. You know, at the beginning of this thing, but I think those were the things that you couldn't hear. So
I'm sorry.
Let me reiterate it. Okay. So, and I don't know when you lost me before. So the, the committee approved, most of the amendments that you see in the posted documents were present for the February 9th first reading. There are a few amendments that were made yesterday. They're clarifications of the board's intent. And the specific language changes are relatively minor additions or reordering of language that was present in the February 9th document. In, in addition to that, Um, in, in addition to that, um, th- the additions were, uh, have been publicly discussed in, in several Policy Committee meetings. And were also talked about in, during the full board meeting on February ninth. We just didn't have specific language on February ninth, but sort of the, the, um, the concept was talked about on February ninth. Um, so, so they, they have been available, and they're, um, I mean, I think they may be significant in impact, but they're not significant in the sense of, you know, having, um, I, I think they're going to be more clear for implementation and operationalization, but they don't cons- constitute, um, wh- what I would consider to be really substantive, uh, changes to the February, the, the, the first read document. And, um, at the, the, our, um, General Counsel has, has advised us that, um, w- we can go forward. Be- because they've been talked about, and they're not r- really substantive, we can go forward with the, um, the second reading and the vote to adopt. So it doesn't require another first reading.
Yeah, Nathaniel
Is that ever seen?
Nathaniel, I had, um, at the February ninth meeting, indicated that I was gonna bring the amendments. And then at the, actually at the last meeting, um, the board meeting, we discussed it again, and, um, Rita mentioned that these were gonna come up the day, the day before. And, um, and I also, in two Policy Committee, not just yesterday, but the previous Policy Committee meeting, it was a stated, it was an agenda item. And I indicated that I was going to be offering these amendments that, uh, and, and the, the, the general subject of them. So that was over, that was over three weeks ago. And so it just turned out, and then we t- talked about how the Policy Committee was just the day before the board meeting, but that since there'd been all these previous discussions about it, um, and the substance of what was in it, and we felt like that there was an op- ample opportunity if anybody had an objection. Um, we've, there's been four, two board meetings and two Policy Committee meetings where they've been discussed in principle, if not in the actual, um, substance, that if people had objections, they could have objected or they had concerns, and there weren't any raised, although we did have a spirited discussion yesterday, um, a- about, about them. Um, and like I say, the, the committee's recommendation was to include them as, um, amendments to the, to the policy.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not saying I didn't know this was coming. It's, it's been out there for a while. Um, I just, you know, more concerned about the actual language itself, not making an appearance until, um, very recently. But I, I understand, um, why that was done. So thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion before we bring this forward for a vote? Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
The board will now vote on Resolution six-two-six-six, Resolution to Approve the Amendments to the Preservation. Um, well, it's not just the amendments, but Resolution to Approve the amended, um, Preservation Maintenance and Disposition of District Real Property, eight-point-seven-zero-point-zero-four-zero dash P. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes?
Yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Are there any abstentions? Resolution six-two-six-six is approved by a vote of six to one. Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
All right. Is there any other business at this time before we adjourn?
I just want to say that I think it's pretty cool that we crafted and just passed an anti-racist real estate policy. That's, those words don't necessarily flow together very easily. And I think that's pretty great, so.
Yeah, and Michelle has planted a seed that, that as we think about property disposition, um, what could be as we, we, as we are faithful stewards of what we have, but also think about, um, what is right.
Um, there's a whole policy manual and guidance that I am hoping to share with all of us, um, about how to do this work. Because we don't really, it's only been sixty-six years since Brown versus Board. So we're not, you know, we're, no one knows how to do this work, so.
Well, Port of Portland, another major property owner in the city is also pursuing, I think, a si- similar path. Um, and so it's really heartening to see instances that, um, have historically, um, held a lot of the land in public trust are reevaluating, um, how that land is used and who benefits from it.
All right, barring anything else, the next meeting of the board will be held on March thirtieth. And this meeting is now adjourned.